Good evening, everyone. This is the June 4 meeting of the Revere City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag? Roll call of the members. Councilor Guadalupe is absent. Councilor Keith.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Gignino.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of May 21, 2018.
Motion overruled.
So ordered.
Madam President, I'd like to ask that everyone stand a moment of silence for Grace Sinella, who passed away this past Sunday. And she, Grace was the wife of school committee man Fred Sinella. And she was a former city employee in the city solicitor's office for many years. And also, a member of a family in the city, the Hill family, who served the city so well, whether it was in city government, state government, or the service of their country, which they paid the ultimate sacrifice, one or two of them. So I ask now that we remember Grace Sinella. She will be sorely missed by the city of Revere, and particularly, the Point of Pines community. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Powers. Calendar item number three. There will be a presentation of the 2018 City of Revere Community Scholarships to three recipients. This time, I'm going to ask that the mayor and the superintendent come up.
Good evening, everyone. As I think you all know, the city of Revere takes great pride in supporting our public schools. And the community scholarship, in my opinion, best represents the community's commitment to our students because the funds that will be distributed tonight, and the funds for the scholarship, derive directly from the residents of our city. And those residents not only appreciate the value of public education, but they also understand and have a soft spot for the need for the assistance that so many of our students and worthy graduates have. And what's interesting about the scholarship fund is that it's small donations, less than $30 each. Those donations made up more than half of all the donations that were made in this year's community scholarship fund. And I mention that because that really shows and proves that this truly is a grassroots award that is funded by ordinary residents. Our community benefits in so many ways when our public schools are known and regarded highly as successful training grounds for life beyond high school and into the workforce. And our students obviously benefit when our community honors and supports those students from our schools, our Revere High graduates, who end up representing our city, not only in college, but all throughout life. And so, it is with great pride that today, I have the opportunity to offer congratulations of an entire city to tonight's award winners. Let's hear it for everyone. And at this point, I just want to, I'm going to recognize and turn it over to somebody who has been a driving force with the scholarship fund committee, and somebody who has been a great advocate for our public schools, and that is Award Five City Councilor John Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to give everyone a little history about the scholarship fund, how it started. In the year 2000, the city of Newton set up a community scholarship fund, similar to what we have here today. And former mayor George Colaula, being the strong advocate that he was for education in his community, decided that, why can't we do that in the city of Revere? And he, at that time, started a community scholarship fund. And then about two years later, when I first got elected to the city council, I attended the graduation ceremonies with Councilor Colaula. And he noticed that there was not a scholarship being awarded from the community scholarship fund. So he asked me if I would co-sponsor a motion and work with him to make that happen. And we did. And there were certain guidelines that were set up, one of which was academic standing in your class, and also, the financial unmet need. And all of those, those two criteria were factored in to make a determination as to how the scholarship would be awarded. And at that time, we didn't have a secretary or any other members, so the mayor, at that time, was appointed Superintendent Carol Ty and Dr. Gennaro Cattalo, George Anzoni, our finance director, myself, and a woman who did a remarkable job, a former principal, Catherine Romano. And I honestly can say now, without Catherine's input, we may have faltered somewhere along the road, and it wouldn't be what it is today. I'll give you a little history about the scholarship fund. Since it started, there were over 400 applications from the high school. To date, including this evening, we will have awarded $123,500 to worthy students. And those 34 students that were awarded scholarships have attended Boston College, Suffolk University, Northeastern, Providence College, Stonehill College, St. Anselm's College, UMass Lowell, UMass Amherst, Assumption College, and Syracuse University. And I think that says an awful lot about this community. And now, I'm going to throw something out there that I hope you'll listen to. In your tax bill, every year, you get a little blue card, and it indicates whether or not you want to make a contribution to the scholarship fund. Well, I urge you to do that because that's what's going to make us be here next year, and the year after, and the year after that, and going to help some real worthy students in this city. So I urge you to do that. I don't care if it's $1, $5, $100, whatever you feel you can do, send it in because it goes a long way, really. And I'd also like to thank the members of the committee. Carol Ty is here, former superintendent and school committee woman. Diane Kelly, our superintendent of schools. Our mayor, of course, Brian Origo, Dr. Gennaro Cattalo, Catherine Romano, who has done such a, I can't emphasize enough, the work and the effort she has put into this to make it what it is today. So with that said, I'd like to now ask the students that are receiving the awards to come up here. Taylor Giriffi-Cattalano, is she here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would you come up here, please? Juan Peliz Bizarro. Thank you, sir. Joyce Oliveri. Juan will be going to American University. Taylor will be going to Boston College, Joyce Oliveri will be going to Boston College also. So what I'd like to do now is have Diane, would you like to read the?
Sure.
Thank you.
And Joyce wasn't able to join us this evening, but we are glad to have these students with us. It says, "Revere Certificate of Achievement in acknowledgment and recognition for being the recipient of the 2018 City of Revere Scholarship. Special recognition is hereby accorded to each of these three students. This certificate is proudly presented by the mayor of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, this fourth day of June in the year of our Lord, 2018, and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 241st."
Are the others here?
Right behind.
Right behind.
Yeah.
But Joyce isn't here?
No.
Okay.
John, do you want one including the families?
Do you want the parents to come up?
Do you want the families?
Yeah.
Can we invite the parents up for a picture as well?
Parents here, would you please?
Now you have to go that way so you can shake everybody's hand.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you again.
You're very welcome. I told you all had work, you deserved it.
This one I'll take home with me.
Yes. The next calendar item is the 2018 Colaula Academic Awards, which will be presented to the top-performing fifth and eighth graders in the city of Revere. And at this time, I'll introduce our mayor to make some introductions.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone, again. It is a privilege to be your mayor, and to be a successor to George Colaula in the mayor's office, and now to participate in recognizing the students who have earned the Academic Achievement Awards named after Mayor Colaula and in his honor. This November will actually mark eight years since the city lost George, and yet, his influence in our city's government continues to this day. These awards are the perfect example of George Colaula's relationship with the city and his emphasis on public education. In these past eight years, nearly $10,000 has been awarded to the highest-ranking fifth grader in each elementary school, and the highest-ranking eighth grader in each middle school. Mayor Colaula, and although he spent more of his time in these council chambers as a city councilor, will always be remembered as Mayor Colaula, would be proud of the students that we honor tonight because the awards reflect the hard work, the commitment to learning, and the self-improvement through education that he so valued. And these are the principles that he championed. I stand here before you tonight to salute Mayor Colaula's legacy, and applaud the students, and more importantly, their families, for their achievement tonight. It is my great honor and pleasure to introduce to all of you, School Committee Woman Carol Ty. Thank you.
Well, it's my honor and pleasure to be here representing the George V. Colaula Academic Achievement Award Committee. George was a person who served the city of Revere in elected office longer than any other official in the city of Revere. He was on the school committee for four years, he was on the city council for 25, and he was mayor for 20. George was educated in the Revere Public Schools. He was a graduate of the class of 1945. He was president of that class. And also a member of that class was his high school sweetheart, June Murphy. He went on to BU after he graduated. She went on to Salem Teachers College. They began their life together afterwards, and they had three girls who also went to Revere High School, Jennifer, Joni, and Liz. And I can say personally, since I was their teacher, that they were absolute stars. So George had been too young to serve in World War II, so he chose a life of public service instead. His mother had always espoused that, that everybody should give back to the community. His father had been a firefighter. His brother was a teacher and coach at Revere High School. And so, education was paramount to him. I recall that he had in his house a library in the basement, and anyone who was newly elected could go there and be tutored by him. And so, I was very fortunate to be the object of his educational advice. He taught me about budgeting, about city budgeting, partly when I was a teacher and couldn't figure out why we couldn't get more money for the schools. And then, when I became superintendent, how we could get more money for the schools. There was a joke about George, that he always had a bottom drawer with a little extra money in it, and he'd say, "Is it for the kids? Is it for the kids?" "It's for the kids." Whenever it was for the kids, George came through. He was very forward-thinking. There were four new schools built while he was in office, and he had the plans all drawn up and ready to go for the current high school that is there. We hope that somebody else will follow along in his footsteps, and we'll have another high school shortly. In his golden years, he thought a lot about you, about the children here who are receiving this. He also provided for a $2,000 scholarship to be given to a high school senior every year, and you'll see that on the graduation program. And he wanted to provide this certificate and this check that goes with it, so that you, who are scholars now, would be encouraged by the community that says, "Congratulations on your achievement, and keep going, will you?" This very building has a dedication plaque to George Colaula, and I hope on your way out, when you go by the front door, and read the plaque. It says, "George V. Colaula, 1927 to 2010. This building is dedicated to the memory of George V. Colaula, who served Revere for 50 years as mayor, councilor, and school committee man. He has the honor of being the longest-serving elected official in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. May this serve as an enduring reminder of his loyal service and passionate dedication to the city of Revere." What an apt, dedicated plaque that is. And just to show you how his vision has proven to be so wonderful for the children who receive the awards. I looked at the graduation list for the children who are graduating this year, in 2018, and then I checked back how many members of that class received the Colaula Award when they were either in the fifth grade in elementary, or when they were in middle school. Every one of those continued in Revere High School. They were members of the National Honor Society. They are going on to do great things. Let me just give you a list. Adajoki Adatebi is going to Babson. Ali Siano is going to Endicott. Joseph Gendrow is going to Merrimack. William Hung is going to Brandeis. Amy Lee, who won both from her elementary and from the middle school, is going to Brandeis also. Joshua Martinez is going to the UMass Lowell. Aaron Rondon to Suffolk. And Nick Velasquez going to the Mass College of Pharmacy. So the Young Scholars Program that we are awarding tonight, providing the highest quality of educational assistance and opportunity for the children of Revere. And I can say personally, he would be so proud of you all, as we all are. And now, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Kelly, who will begin the awarding of certificates.
Thank you, Ms. Ty. And as Ms. Ty mentioned, there is a Colaula Award for the highest-performing fifth grader at each of the six elementary schools, and at each of the highest-performing eighth grader at each of the three middle schools. And so, we're going to start with the middle schools first. And what I'd like to do is, when I read the recipient's name, if they would come up with their parents, and with their principal. And then, each principal has worked with the staff in that school to put together a little bit of a bio about the students, which they'll read as part of the award, so we can get a glimpse now of the bright futures that these kids have. So we'll begin. The first one is for the Susan B. Anthony School, Camilo Cortez LoPera. Can I have School Committee Woman Rizzo come up too, please? Camilo Cortez LoPera is a boy who has striven for excellence his whole life. This is the second time being awarded the George Colaula Award, having also earned it in fifth grade. He has always been respectful and well-respected by his peers. One of his classmates described him as "one of the most intelligent and hard-working kids he has ever met." Camilo enjoys spending time with his family, playing basketball with his sister Isabella, and playing soccer on his club team. Eighth grade has been a big year for Camilo. He's been voted the most likely to succeed, and most likely to cure a disease in the yearbook. He has also earned a spot in the SBA Aspires, where he has spent time volunteering for Revere CPAC Autism Walk, and the SBA's Operation Give Back, where he and other aspirers collected donations for veterans. Camilo's hard work, quiet, reflective personality, and his love of dad jokes have all led him on the path to success. His future is very bright, and he is looking forward to a third George Colaula Award when he is a senior at RHS. He is hoping to eventually become an electrical engineer, but we all know that wherever life takes him, he will find success. It is my pleasure to introduce Camilo Cortez LoPera. The Colaula recipient from the Romney Marsh Academy is Angela Hun. Invite her with her family and Dr. Belushi.
I'm going to use my teacher voice. Angela is a wonderful student, a talented writer, and an amazing person. When it comes to academics, Angela's prowess is unmatched. Angela has achieved principals list, which is straight A's for every single term that she has been at the Romney Marsh Academy. And that is with a full pre-advanced placement schedule since she entered our school in the sixth grade. Since she was a third grader, she has scored advanced on every single solitary standardized test that she has taken. MCAS, MCAS 2.0, PARC, it did not matter. Math, English, science, truly, truly amazing, with a perfect score along the way. Her dedication to academics, her school, and her community is second to none. This year, Angela was nominated in our inaugural RMA HAWK Helpers Program. It's an eighth-grade peer leadership group that is led by our math teacher, Mr. Nolo. Angela was nominated by all of her teachers, and really took on a leadership role within this leadership group. In addition, Angela was recently inducted into our RMA Aspires Club, and she was the student with the highest GPA in the top 10% of our students in our school. A few years ago, she served on the debate mate team and led the RMA Hawks to a top-five finish in Boston University's finale program that included over 50 schools. And yet, all of these accomplishments somehow do not capture the comprehensive spirit of Angela. So I asked her teachers to lend along some words, and I'm going to read you a few quick blurbs. Mr. Nolo says she always tells students that she's never going to remember their average, but will always remember their character. However, Angela was the first student ever to receive over 100% for a full term in Mr. Nolo's class, an incredibly rigorous class. As such, Mr. Nolo is modifying that statement. As such, Mr. Nolo is modifying that statement according to her. Mr. Carlson says she is a talented writer with a unique voice. She looks for out-of-the-box answers and never settles for the easy answer and loves to challenge her teacher and student. And perhaps Ms. O'Reilly captures her perfectly when she says, and I'm going to read verbatim, "Angela seeks excellence in all that she does and achieves her own high standards more often than not. But beyond just seeking excellence for herself, Angela also strives for justice and equality for all people. She passionately champions causes that lift up the concerns of the disenfranchised and frequently uses her voice as an instrument of change and progress. Whatever she chooses to do in life, I am assured she will make a positive difference in our world." Congratulations to Angela. We are so proud of you.
The Colletta Award recipient from the Garfield Middle School is Jenny Pitch. I invite her with Dr. Meyer and her family to come on up.
Jenny Pitch is an exceptional student and person, not just eager and excited to learn, but kind and putting people in front of herself. Jenny does not accept anything other than perfection and will persevere through the most difficult topics until she has completely mastered them. Jenny has high-school-level and sometimes even college-level insight and analysis on academic readings. Jenny's got many, many academic accomplishments, so I'll just list a few. She has had the highest score on the last three English Language Arts Common Assessments and has scored 100% unscaled, perfect, on the last two. She's moved on to the History Fair Regionals for the past two years, and her 2017 Science Fair project received third place in the Regional Science Fair and qualified for the Massachusetts State Science Fair. Jenny has the support of her loving family, which includes her father, mother, seven-year-old brother, cousin, and grandmother. Her parents and cousins serve as her role models because they honor her work and value perseverance. Jenny's grandmother has made a significant impact in her life as a positive influence who is there for her no matter what. In her free time, you will often find Jenny drawing or writing. She is an incredible artist and a gifted writer who combines her creativity and amazing ideas with her own feelings and experiences to produce drawings, stories, and poetry. Jenny isn't afraid to be who she is, and for that, she has the respect of her peers and her teachers. Jenny has led several of our fifth-grade tours and worked our school book fair as a member of the GMS Aspirers Club. In reflecting about these experiences, she's commented on how they pushed her out of her comfort zones, forcing her to be more outgoing and vocal than she usually is. We're proud of Jenny for strengthening her voice and grateful to the contributions that she's made to Garfield Middle School community. We hope to hear more of that voice at RHS. Jenny has plans to attend college, and since the age of four, she's decided she wanted to follow in her father's footsteps in pursuing a medical career. Given how many accomplishments she has already, it's truly wonderful to see how humble she is. We wish Jenny the best and are so eager to see where her determination and perseverance will lead her in the future. We know great things lie ahead. Congratulations, Jenny.
So we'll now move on to the elementary awards. And for the Beauchamp School, our recipient is Jasne De Leon.
So it is my distinct pleasure to introduce the Colletta Award winner for the Beauchamp School, Jasne De Leon. I always look forward to this award ceremony because it gives me the opportunity to highlight students whose efforts exemplify the idea of being a scholar. They're hardworking, hard-achieving, and go above and beyond expectations. Over the years, I've also found our Colletta winners are some of the kindest, caring students you'll ever want to meet. They are leaders in and outside of the school and are role models for their peers. Jasne fits this description perfectly. He's a quiet kid, but his character speaks volumes. His teachers describe him as thoughtful, focused, and always willing to help out. He is a true gentleman, and it is those who are good students and good people that make us proud because we know they have the tools to do great things in this world. And I would like to recognize his teachers, Mr. Katab and Mr. Anderson, for doing such a great job for him and our students. Jasne is a straight-A student and wants to be in the pre-school program at the RMA. Last year on the MCAS assessment, he scored at the highest levels on both the ELA and math tests, and he is consistently one of the highest scorers on the interim math and reading assessments administered by the district. His favorite subject is math because he loves to grapple with complex math problems. Therefore, it is no surprise that he is also an excellent chess player who frequently plays with his siblings and parents and was one of the top finishers in this year's fifth-grade chess tournament after a riveting 35-minute duel of great moves and strategy. Now, even though he didn't win, he was a great sportsman. He looked at the chess boards for a few seconds and then reached over to shake the winner's hand. Continuing with this theme of embracing a challenge, Jasne has recently become very interested in computer coding after having some introductory coding lessons in his computer class. And he has taken it upon himself to expand his knowledge by practicing this very important skill at home. Now, when he is not cracking math problems or laying the smackdown on opponents in chess, Jasne is an avid soccer player, playing as much as he can during his free time. That is when he is not playing video games or reading some of his favorite comic books. When he grows up, he wants to be a mechanical engineer and work on developing the world's first flying car. As you can see, he is already engineering a great future for himself. Congratulations, Jasne, on being the Beauchamp Colletta winner.
The Colletta Award recipient for the Garfield Elementary School is Valeria Yapes Restrepo.
All right, thank you. I have a few words to share with all of you about Valeria. But first, I'd like to recognize a couple of her teachers that are here today, Mr. Walpole and Mrs. Lyon. Thank you for being here. Certainly, she wouldn't be here without your help and guidance. So thank you. Valeria is an accomplished bilingual 11-year-old who is proud to represent the Garfield Elementary School. Her academic accomplishments are far too numerous to mention all of them here, but some outstanding highlights are the fact that she has won the Grade Level Spelling B in first grade, second grade, and fourth grade. And she has earned Principal's List, which is straight A's, in third, fourth, and fifth grade. While her peers respect her academic accomplishments, she is also a role model for younger students when she serves as a peer leader in a first-grade classroom once a week. Valeria lives with her mother, father, and baby sister. She's an avid reader who loves to curl up with books about famous characters from Harry Potter to Malala. However, she is not afraid to show off her athletic prowess during recess, where she has become quite the flag football player. For seven years, Valeria has spent time outside of school learning Bahucol. Right? Did I say that right? Okay. Which is a Colombian folklore ballet. She's also an avid swimmer who learned to swim at the Garfield Elementary Pool. Valeria is clearly on a path toward academic and athletic success as she continues on to the Romney Marsh Academy. After she graduates from high school, Valeria plans to attend Harvard University. So congratulations, Valeria, and mom and dad.
The Colletta Award recipient from the Hill School is Kenneth Santizo. Wait, wait. Kenneth, Kenneth, Kenneth.
Good evening. Kenneth Santizo has been a student at the McKinley Inn Hill since kindergarten. And I thought I knew Kenneth pretty well until I called him in to tell him that he was the recipient of the Colletta Award and didn't really realize and came to appreciate his quick wit and sense of humor. You know, as I go on, you'll understand what I'm saying. But as I was telling him that he was a top student, he was smiling, and he's smiling a lot. And I said, "Are you okay?" He goes, "You know something? This is big." It is big. And as we chatted, and I knew he'd only spent his days at the McKinley Inn Hill, jokingly, and I say this to kids now and then, "And who's your favorite principal?" And he said to me, "Can you give me a few minutes to think about that?" Academically, third, fourth, and fifth grade, Principal's List, for all his standardized tests, PRC 2.0 and MCAS, all advanced to level five, the highest you can get. In fourth grade, ELA missed a perfect score by one question. In talking to teachers about Kenneth, avid reader, diligent worker, always looking to get better. And in talking to his students, this really struck me, he's a good friend, always looking to help people. In acting about his key success, I said, "What makes you so successful?" And he said, "I always try my best. There should be no slacking. And I would recommend that everybody eat their vegetables."
They're good for you.
They're good for you. On a personal note, he's a positive role model to his brother Iker, who's right back here. Loves to play soccer, football, and is going to start dabbling in golf, too, right, Kevin? Plans to attend MIT, wants to study to be an electrical engineer. I have no doubt that he will become that. He will be attending SBA in the fall, and it's my pleasure to congratulate Kenneth and his family. Congratulations.
The Colletta Award recipient from the Lincoln School is Briani Munaton.
The Lincoln School is proud to have Briani as our Colletta Award recipient. She's a bright, dedicated young lady and a distinguished student. Her teachers, who are in the audience today, thank you, describe her as "the perfect student," polite, respectful, voracious reader, and a talented writer. Friends describe Briani as "a kind, empathetic, caring friend." We wish Briani much luck in middle school and beyond and know she will do great things. We are very proud of you.
The Kellella Award recipient from the Paul Riviere School is Ertha Ismahili.
We're dancing, we usually do, right, Ertha? It is my pleasure at the Paul Riviere to present Ertha Ismahili. And Ertha, I have to tell you, like Ed, I love the George Kellella Award, to be here to give back to the students, but we know them so well academically. Academically, Ertha has the highest score in the Mastery Connect hundreds on ELA and math. Science, she had scored a perfect hundred in the science interim, which is unbelievable. Her academics, we know so well. MCAST, she got exceedingly, for her scores, were the highest. Her achieve level is 1,600, which is college level, is so high. So all that academically, we know. Her teachers, Stacy Bonfiglio, Lena D'Senzo, and Lane Grassi, and Mrs. Burke, all call Ertha a nice girl, just a nice girl. But sitting down with her and learning more personally about Ertha is the best part of the whole thing. Academically, she scores, just like every other student here. She's gonna attend the Romney RMA. She also plans to go to Riviere High, and then Harvard is her school, so Valeria, you'll have a roommate. Sitting with her, talking with her, she really divulged a lot of herself. She loves knitting. I don't know anyone in this age that still knits, and I was proud of her because I used to make scarves from here all the way down to Joian. She makes them, she said scarves and hats for her brother, Ergy, who goes to Riviere High. She said she helps, she likes tennis, to help Ergy get better at his tennis. She does games with Ergy. She also told me that most of the things she does is because of her brother's support and love. That meant so much to me, having four brothers. I don't think I thought that highly, and you know my brothers. The way she talked about her brother was, everything was for Ergy. It just is amazing that she put herself here and Ergy here. What a great love for an older brother. I thought that was wonderful. The other thing about, oh. The other thing that Ertha really said, I said, "What do you like to do on your own time?" Because it was all academics, reading and doing things. She taught herself how to play the violin. She takes her friends when she goes out to the Riviere Public Library, who, again, on a Friday night or a Saturday night, goes to the Riviere Public Library with her friends. And she said, "This will help them love reading like I love reading." I just thought that was so great. So, Ed, like Ed said, you learn these little things about them that just make them bloom in front of your eyes. So with all my heart, I present Ertha, who's well-deserving of this award.
The Kellella Award recipient from the Wayland Elementary School is Vincent Phan.
Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations.
Vincent, this is for you.
Congratulations.
Vincent Phan has been a distinguished student at the AC Wayland Elementary School since the beginning of kindergarten. He embodies the characteristics of a recipient for the Kellella Award. Due to his hard work and his dedication, he has been an honor roll or principal's list student every trimester since third grade. Although Vincent excels in all of his subjects, he eagerly shares that his favorite school subject is math. His fourth-grade teacher, Ms. Vale, commented, "Vincent is such a hard-working student. He loves a challenge. He worked really hard, always improving his work, and he always asked thoughtful questions. I could always count on him to be a leader and go above and beyond to help his classmates." Ms. Cochran, here this evening, Mr. Soto, his other fifth-grade teacher, they shared that not only is Vincent a talented student academically, he's even a greater person. Vincent is respectful, kind, and compassionate. He goes above and beyond what can be expected of a student and has a positive influence on everyone around him. Ms. Delaney and I added, "He's modeled our seven habits of happy kids this year, from being proactive with his coursework, putting first things first, synergizing with his classmates on any kind of a problem, and of course, taking time to shop in the saw. He likes to work outside of school volunteering, running, playing basketball, and riding his bicycle." Looking at his next academic journey, Vincent will attend the Garfield Middle School in the fall, where we know he will continue to inspire all those that he encounters. He would like to be a computer programmer when he grows up. It's an honor to be able to recognize Vincent Phan for the George V. Kellella Award for Academic Achievement. Congratulations.
So just before we do end, I want to acknowledge for the people at home, the absolute line of teachers and principals and assistant principals who are here tonight to celebrate their students. We really appreciate all of the hard work and dedication that has, what you've put in to help these kids be here tonight. So, and we thank you for giving your extra time to be here tonight, too.
Thank you, everyone. We'll take a brief five-minute recess so everyone can clear out, and then we'll resume the regular order of business. All right, at this time, we're gonna return to the regular order of business. So that concludes calendar item number four. At this time, I'm gonna ask for a suspension of rules to take up some things for the city. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. This time, we're gonna take up some late communications.
Right, the late communications are relative to the various DWSRF funds, loan orders, as well as CWSRF fund loan orders.
So at this time, we'll start with calendar item number 32, communication from the mayor relative to Oak Island Water Main Improvements Construction. If there are any questions, all these communications will be ordered to a public hearing on June 18th. Anyone on the first one? This will be ordered to a public hearing. Next is calendar item number 33, communication from the mayor relative to Oak Island Water Main Improvements Planning and Design. If there are no questions, this will also be ordered to a public hearing for June 18th.
Calendar item number 34, communication from the mayor relative to the illicit connection and some pump removal program construction. This is a loan order as well.
Again, if there are no questions, this will be ordered to a public hearing for June 18th.
Calendar item number 35, communication from the mayor relative to the illicit connection detection and some pump investigations loan order.
If there are no questions, this will also be ordered to a public hearing for June 18th.
Calendar item number 36, communication from the mayor relative to Phase 9 construction, infiltration, inflow, illicit discharge detection, and elimination, pump station, and drainage loan order.
Again, to a public hearing, June 18th.
And calendar item number 37, communication from the mayor relative to the Phase 10 Field Investigations Loan Order.
Last one, if there are no questions, June 18th.
Was here? Is he still? He was just, he walked, maybe he's in the hall.
He joins us again, we'll give him a moment to speak. Seeing and hearing none, we'll return to the regular order of business.
Madam President?
Counselor.
While we're under suspension, would it be possible to take up calendar item number 16?
Sure, Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number 16, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of R. Sasso &amp; Sons Construction Inc. as a licensed drainlayer.
Madam President?
Counselor.
This appointment, this particular appointee has worked for the city for quite some time now, and the only reason I have, I don't think I've ever, as a city council or otherwise, taken somebody out of order or bypassed what we would normally use as the appointment process, but he has work that was scheduled and because of various reasons, couldn't get an earlier appointment. And so his appointment actually has been jeopardized, and he can't do work. So that's the only reason I'm calling him out of line. It's a local Riviere contractor, a Riviere family, and, you know, I'm hopeful that the city council would see fit to approve his reappointment as a licensed drainlayer, if that is within our purview, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Rotundo.
Yes, Madam President, I support the efforts by Counselor Rizzo. Mr. Sasso, quite frankly, has been very diligent in the community. He's always there when, frankly, the community needs him, but most importantly, he's very good at what he does, and if we can approve him tonight accordingly, I would vote in favor of this.
Counselor Keefe?
My motion to approve. Madam President, if I may.
If I may, quick, for your point, I just wanted to say that Counselor Guanasso is the chairman of the Appointment Subcommittee. He is ill this evening. I did speak with him before the meeting, and he asked that no appointments be voted on. He wants, you know, to review it as the chairman, so I'm just making that statement on behalf of the chairman. Counselor?
I pass for now. I'll vote on keeping it, go into committee.
So again, I have a vote by a counselor to see it passed. Again, just stating the will of the chairman, that it's staying in committee. I'll ask the will of the council, however you wish to move forward, we can do.
I would like to second Counselor Keefe's motion to approve.
So we have a motion to approve on the floor?
Madam President, procedurally, as you are the president and granted that the committee member is not here in the chair, by default, you then become the chairman of that particular committee, so we can do that within our purview.
I understood it. It's totally the will of the council, I'm just relaying a message. So if it's the will of the council to vote on it this evening, we absolutely can.
Madam President, if that's the case, may I say something?
Yes.
You know, I've known the Sassos for a long time, and I have no problem approving this, but I'd just like to, you know, we've had some issues in the past, and I want to make sure that none of those issues happen again. You know, I just want to tell the candidate that, you know, I'm concerned about him, and I just want to make sure that he dots his i's and crosses his t's. Thank you.
So noted, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Patch?
I recommend that we go forward tonight with it, the will of the council. Thank you.
Roll call. Shall the city council confirm the appointment of R. Sasso as a licensed drainlayer for the city of Riviere? Counselor Guanasso is absent. Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Giannino?
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed.
Madam President, if I may, can we also take up, you know, and again, I hate to do this, too, but we have an issue going on down in my neighborhood with the Safe Roots Program, and the next candidate, AR Belly Incorporated, is doing work to do new sidewalks for the school, and they need drainage work done, so they're up for permit approval, so I'd hope that could be taken up tonight. No, there is not, because they were told not to. You know, so, but, you know, knowing they wanted to start today, and they can't.
Anyone have any questions, wish to speak? My only concern is that they're not here, but it's the will of the council, any councilors wish to speak, have any questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Morabito?
My concern is, it's not a reappointment, it's a new appointment, so I'd like to ask questions, and I would like the candidate to be here.
So noted.
And this last motion, this last communication that we voted on was a reappointment. We relatively, we relatively understand his work, and we know who he is, so I think it's best if we hold off on this one.
Any other counselors wishing to speak on this?
Madam President, if I may?
Yeah.
Personally, I can't see why we would delay the Safe Roots. Knowing Counselor Novosolsky's history as being someone who's diligent and scrutinizes people to the nth degree, I would feel comfortable, you know, following suit with him on this particular issue, and clearly, if we're agreeing on the same thing, then it's probably telling you something.
Any other counselors wishing to speak? Any other counselors? If I may, I'm typically against taking things out of committee, I know that's why we have our committees, and I, especially in a situation where the chairman's not here to speak on it, so I do have some reservations with that, and I'm sure he's at home watching, not very happy right now, but if it's the will of the council to move on this...
I move forward. Motion to move forward.
Motion to move forward.
Roll call.
Madam Clerk?
Madam President, can Counselor Novosolsky tell us a little bit about the company?
Well, they're not from Riviere. They were basically hired by the Commonwealth MS to do the work, not the city.
Did you already speak to the project manager?
I've spoken to the owner.
Well, that's good for me.
Are all their licenses up to date?
Move that, we move forward.
Roll call. Shall the city council confirm the appointment of AR Belly Inc. as a licensed drainlayer? Counselor Guanasso is absent. Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
I have to recuse.
Is being recorded as recused, and Counsel President Giannino?
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed.
Thank you, Counselors, and Counsel...
Madam President?
You're welcome.
Counselor?
I understand we're under suspension of rules. We do have Rick Viskey here. I'd like to take an opportunity to ask a particular question of him, as the mayor's not here, and it's something that I've been asking for, for the past almost two years now, and I'd just like to have three minutes to ask a question.
Which calendar item are you referring to?
It is not on the calendar item. I'm just seeing, I have an opportunity to ask for something that I'm gonna either end up having to fill ya, or put in as another council request for the third time.
I know Mr. Viskey is here for some other motions as well, so if we're gonna call him up for that, we might as well take up the motions, and then we'll bring that up at the end.
Sounds perfect.
So we'll start with, I believe, the communications, Madam Clerk. So we'll start with, I believe, the communications, Madam Clerk. So number eight.
Calendar item number eight, Communication from the City Auditor Relative to the Tax Title Collection Revolving Funds.
Mr. Vizcay?
Thank you, Counsel. Before you, I have a motion to accept Massachusetts General Law that will allow us to set up a tax title revolving fund each year. That's part of the appropriation process in the budget. However, there are laws that allow you to set up revolving funds for these types of expenses. As you know, there's kind of ebbs and flows to that account. It's pretty hard to accurately budget the correct amount every year. So what we're looking for here is to establish that fund. And later, you'll see an appropriation from free cash to seed that. And once that's seeded, I don't believe you'll need any more funds from appropriation to fund so. Because when we do tax title accounting and we get redemptions of tax title, they'll fund that account and we'll be able to perpetuate that particular business of the city. So before you, just asking to accept that law to establish that fund. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vizcay. Are there any councilors that have any questions?
President, are these all going to go to committee? The, all these new, we got a few funds here that they're looking for here. Are we going to, we're not going to vote on this tonight, correct?
If it's the will of the council, they all could be voted on by a roll call vote. But if it's the wish to go to Ways and Means, we can send them to Ways and Means as well.
Madam President, I prefer them to go to committee. We can look at them there as well.
I just got, I just got a question. On these different funds that you...
I haven't asked.
The tax title, the Workers' Compensation Insurance Fund, the Establishment Fund, Free City Audit Relative to Free Cash Appropriations, all these funds. Now, in the, in the past, didn't we like transfer money from different accounts to take care of that at the end of the year?
Stabilization.
The tax title revolving fund and the workers' comp are usually annual budget appropriations. But there are mechanisms in the Mass General Law that allow you to set up special revenue accounts to account for these so that you don't have to appropriate them as part of the budget. Some of these funds are set up to help with the administration and to segregate the inflows and outflows. So it's considered best practice. So we're trying to establish some new accounting methods to help segregate those and give you a clear accounting of such.
Does that take, take the oversight of the council at the, during the budget meeting?
No, it's like any special revenue account or revolving funds that you voted in the past. It's just, it's just the Mass General Law that allows you to account for them separately. So basically, it's actually easier to present revenues in and expenditures out of those particular funds.
Start with Counselor Zambudo, then Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Madam President. I, for one, don't have a problem with voting on these tonight because they are what they are. And they're not very hard to explain. But I'll go along with the, whatever the council wants to do. But my opinion is, these could be voted on tonight. Thank you.
With the Ways and Means Chairman, Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Just because I know I've received questions from colleagues here, it was my inclination to put it into committee so we could have a dedicated meeting just to talk a little bit more about this and have councilors digest it and come up with questions that they might have. But you just said something, and I'm ad libbing here, I forget exactly what you said. But you said this is going to be exempt from the budget or not part of what would appear in the budget when we get the budget? These revolving funds would not be listed in the budget itself?
Well, revolving funds are a different story. Annually, you would have to approve of each budget. You just adopted the Mass General Law for all the revolving funds with the chart. That still has to come before the council every year for a budget vote. These particular funds, in the case of workers' comp, it still comes, every appropriation comes before the council. So it would just not be an appropriation to the general fund, it would be an appropriation to a special revenue fund so that you could account for it separately.
Are these special revenue funds showing up? Because as you know, we're supposed to have the budget by June 1st. Council doesn't have it. In fact, I tried to schedule meetings so that we could start the budget process because, you know, obviously, it's a lengthy document and we all want to have time to digest it and look at it and have a chance to, to talk to the various department heads. And here we are, June 4th, and I haven't seen the budget. So, and I don't know where it's at. But yet, we're getting requests here to set up revolving funds and spend free cash and all this other stuff. You know, I just want to know that, that the money that is going to be put into these revolving funds is somewhere going to show itself on the budget document that we receive.
Well, I'll take the first part of that. The budget, I believe by statute, is due on June 19th, 170 days. So I wasn't aware of any council deadline for the budget, but I was in communication with the city clerk to give it a date on that.
That's by statute, understood. But, but in Revere, it has been practiced. I don't know if we have it in the form of an ordinance, but we were supposed to have it June 1st. I know that, I know that colleagues here historically have started looking for the budget as of June 1st. You know, inclu, I mean, well, in any case, you know, generally, generally, we're supposed to have that. But that's, but that's neither here nor there. Will this revolving fund show itself in the budget document itself?
Well, the budget document will, it will show it because there'll be accounts for everything. But basically, what you appropriate during the budget process, a general fund and enterprise fund appropriations. Special revenue accounts and such usually have revenue in and expenditure out, but they're not part of the general fund operating budget.
Well, of course, of course, of course, a revolving fund is going to have revenue in and expenditures out.
Right.
That I understand. What I'm saying is, will this be clear to people, my colleagues, when we get the budget? Or is this just going to be, the budget comes out in June and we're getting these annual requests for, you know, to either fund or we have balances in these accounts? In other words, is it going to be all part of the overall city budget when we get that budget document itself? So we know what's in these revenue accounts.
Yeah, well, of course. You have access to every budget in the city, revenue, general fund, special revenue, et cetera. This particular, these particular requests are helping build towards finalizing the budget. So with the establishment of these funds, it allows me to then finish budgeting. So the couple of laws that I've asked to get appropriated, adopted and appropriations for, obviously, you would have them in front of you. So they'd be very clear to what it is. And then annually, you'll have appropriations for such, exactly.
So, so are these revolving funds, are these holding up the budget process? Is that what you're saying?
No, they're just, they're, if they're adopted as such, then I can reallocate, instead of appropriating them in the general fund, I'll appropriate them in the special revenue fund.
Okay, well, Madam President, Madam President, I would vote to put this in committee. We're having, we have several Ways and Means Committee meetings already lined up. And if we have to, you know, just bring this up, or even if we have to pick another night just to go over, you know, this on a separate, on a separate basis, I'd like to see if my colleagues have questions. If it's the will of the rest of the council to pass it tonight, you know, as far as the revolving funds go, I don't necessarily have a problem. But I'm just concerned that we get this dropped on us now and we have no time to deliberate. It's vote now or, you know, there may be questions. I mean, I know I just had questions now that I needed clarified. So I'll leave it to the rest of the council what they want to do. But it would be my inclination to put it into committee. Thank you.
Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you. And as I had spoken to you earlier about the question that I have, you just said earlier about access to information. And this access that I'm looking for predates your presence here in the city. I'm still looking for the audit. It's been close to two years now. I want to know where the audit is. This is my third time asking for it. It's $72,000 that we paid for. And I'm just hoping that you can help me get my hands on it. I was told that it wasn't ready. And what I can say is, that's the longest audit that I've ever seen in the city's history. Off of that matter, that I've seen in other communities too. This is almost a two-year audit for what was supposed to be for 30B. I had concerns about it in the past. I'd like to know where it is. If I can't get the audit itself, I'd like the scope of work. If I don't get it, I'm going to have to FOIA that too. And this is supposed to be transparent unless there's some type of legal issue here that I don't know about. I'd like to get that actual audit in my hands by the end of the week. Is that a possibility? And is the audit done?
I believe the audit you're talking about is the operational audit, not the yearly annual financial report.
No, I'm talking about an audit that was done where we appropriated $72,000, in particular for 30B.
An operational audit, not the annual audit by Powers &amp; Sullivan. That's been completed. We have copies of the annual audit.
Excuse me?
Powers &amp; Sullivan's annual audit of the financials is complete. But I believe you're talking about a different audit.
Correct. And why isn't that completed? Which is far smaller in comparison to the other one.
Well, I know that we have a draft of that audit, but I'm not prepared to release it because it's in draft form.
It's public information, I'd like it.
It's in draft form.
All right, at this time, Counselor, we're going to return back to the regular order of business. I've been very lenient with that, but we're not anywhere on track. If there are no more questions of the council, is it the will of the council to vote on it this evening? If there are more questions, I suggest we put it in committee rather than sitting here deliberating about it for another 20 minutes because this is getting nowhere. Counselor Morabito?
Thank you, Madam President. So Mr. Vizcay, so for this to be part of the budget, we would have to vote on this before we have budget meetings. We would have to approve this or it's not going to be on our budget booklet. And we have a, we, Mr. Chairman, the Chairman of Ways and Means, Counselor Rizzo, we have a meeting on the 12th to discuss, discuss the budget, correct? And it's not going to be due, it's not going to be passed in until the 19th?
Well, these laws were brought forward because if they were accepted as laws, then the appropriation, you do have some free cash appropriations. The idea was to fund that with a free cash appropriation. If the law isn't voted, then we would have to go back to the old way of appropriating in the general fund. So again, we're trying to get the laws adopted so we can build the budget according to how we want to present it. But that's the will of the council.
So in simple terms, if we don't vote on this tonight, if we do not pass it, it will not, it will not reflect in the budget that we look at in next week?
Yeah, we would have to adjust the budget.
Correct.
Exactly. Again, the appropriations, I'm sorry.
I asked my colleague, Counselor Rizzo, were we supposed to discuss the budget on next Tuesday, correct? Because we have, we have four meetings set up and it's supposed to start next week.
Right. I don't have the schedule in front of me, but I believe the first meeting was the 12th?
It's the 12th, the 20th, and the 21st with final recommendations prior to the June 25th meeting at 4:00.
Right. So my goal, my goal originally was to have the first meeting, I believe, tomorrow night. And, but unfortunately, I was told that we weren't going to have the budget. So I had to, I had to postpone it. And my apologies to you, Madam President. I know that you have, you have, you know, work-related travel that doesn't permit you to be here. We just ran out of dates, so that's why I was trying to schedule around that. And, but in any case, our first meeting will be on the 12th to discuss the budget.
Yeah, so my concern is, I'd like to see this information reflected in the budget that we're looking at on the 12th. So that's why I would vote it out.
If it's voted on this evening, would it be affected in the 2018, 2017, 20, wow, 2019 fiscal budget? Would it be able to be applied that soon?
The strategy was to have the laws adopted at this meeting. And there are appropriations that would relate to those laws. And if, if, if those appropriations were put in the committee, then you can vote those out. But it would be nice to have the laws established so that we build the budget in accordance to those.
At this time, I was asked the council by a show of hands, who wishes to see this go into committee?
I'd like it in committee because this isn't a pressing, a pressing issue. They have other mechanisms in order to deal with that. I still doesn't, I still don't have the audit. No, enough. I want information. I'm sick of the damn waiting. I'm just done with this. Two years for an audit and now we got this? No. Put it in committee. I'm done with the Malachi.
Any other councilors have any comments? Very quiet this side tonight. Counselor Novosolsky has a motion on the floor to vote on these tonight. We'll call a roll on Counselor Novosolsky's motion.
Do you want the motion to be, to put the item into committee or to, if you vote...
Counselor.
Okay. You want to read the question as an, as an affirmative? So it would be, shall the city council, the motion would be, shall the city council refer this item to Ways and Means?
No. 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 No.
Shall the city council refer council order 18-180 relative to the tax title collection revolving fund to Ways and Means? Councillor Guanasso is absent. Councillor Keefe?
No.
No. Councillor McKenna?
No.
No. Councillor Morbido?
No.
No. Councillor Nowosowski?
No.
No. Councillor Patch?
No.
No. Councillor Powers?
No.
No. Councillor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Zambudo?
No.
No. And Council President Gino?
No.
No, the motion will not be referred to committee.
This time, Madam Clerk, can we call the roll on calendar item number eight?
Shall the city council adopt the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 15B, for the purpose of establishing a tax title revolving fund? Councillor Guanasso is absent. Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Morbido? Yes. Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Rizzo? No. Councillor Rotundo? No. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Gino?
Yes.
Yes, the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 15B, has been adopted.
This time, we'll take up calendar item number nine.
Calendar item number nine, communication from the city auditor relative to the workers' compensation insurance fund.
Again, similar to the last vote, this is a fund that can be established to account for the workers' compensation, insurance, and medical payments per Section 13A of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40. Same idea is that these appropriations would go into this particular fund, and they'd be accounted for separately. Again, having clear inflows and outflows of that, the council has any wish they need to see any of these numbers, they're always welcome to have them, but it will all be part of the budget process. But, again, it's just trying to bring some best business practices into the budget for fiscal year 19.
Any councillors? Councillor Zambudo?
Motion to approve.
Madam Clerk?
Madam Chairman, before we call the roll, if it's okay, I just want to throw you, Madam President, to the city auditor. This is, you know, I believe and trust that this is all in good faith to, you know, to bring best practices to the extent we can as time goes along to the city budget. I don't have a problem with that. The only problem I have is that, as the chairman of the committee, I'm not comfortable with getting things on the same night that we have to vote it. And, you know, I just think it would make, you know, if you want to call it a form of best practices from a city council perspective, I just think we should have a little time to be able to talk about it. You know what I mean? So this is not a direct reflection on you or the administration. It's just, you know, to take it up tonight for a vote without having any chance to really talk about it. I mean, there may be questions that come up, but you get put in front of you on a Monday night and say, "Vote on it." So, you know, that's my reasoning behind the way that I am voting tonight. So I just want you to understand that. This is not a personal-
No, I understand, and you have that right. I did try to write it clear, and I'm here to answer questions, but I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors have any questions? On the motion?
Shall the city council adopt the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 13A, for the purpose of establishing a workers' compensation fund? Councillor Guanasso is absent. Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Rizzo?
No.
No. Councillor Rotundo? No. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Gino?
Yes.
Yes, the general law has been accepted. Calendar item number 10, communication from the city auditor relative to the establishment of stabilization funds for sick leave buyback and other post-employment benefits liability.
Councillor Zambudo?
Motion to approve.
Any councillors have any questions? If it's the will of the council, because there are 10 of us here this evening, and eight out of 10 are wishing to vote, I'll allow plenty of time for any questions. I don't want anyone to feel like they don't have an ample amount of time. But, again, the majority rules, so that's why I'm going with the will of the council. So, is there anyone that has any questions? Councillor Keefe?
Thank you, Madam President. Throw you to Mr. Fiskay. I mean, these are all, these are all pretty much similar to me, if I understand them correctly. We approve the funding of the account. And then the department heads will take in revenues and spend the revenues with, you know, as a director that we trust in the departments to use them as they may. And the funds keep restocking themselves, correct? Money goes in, it gets spent accordingly?
With regard to these two laws, these are actually stabilization accounts, which require a two-thirds vote of money in and two-thirds vote money out. So every appropriation in and out of these two particular funds follow the same rules as stabilization fund for the general fund and the water and sewer enterprise. So, in this particular case, every single action within this has the two-thirds vote, but-
And we have to, but we have to approve that funding?
Yeah, there are some appropriation orders after that which can be acted on tonight or put in committee. But, yeah, the idea is to establish these funds and then bring forward appropriations accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors have any questions? Councillor Patch?
Yeah, again, I'll go back to the question I had. I really, I agree with Councillor Rizzo there that I don't like getting stuff at the last minute here. I see CDM Smith, they're going to ask him for a ton of money, too. And they're always at the last minute. And I complain every year, and it just doesn't do any good. So that's why I'm voting yes, because I knew the vote was going to go anyways tonight. But this money, this fund, these funds, money can be taken out of it. Can they be taken out of it without our vote?
With regard to these two laws, these are our stabilization accounts. So they have two-thirds vote to put money in and two-thirds vote to take money out. The reason why we wanted to set up these funds for these two particular items is because, let's just say, for example, we appropriate $425,000 for sick leave buyback, and you only use $350,000. That balance of money will get swept into the general fund and has to be re-appropriate next year. But if we fund them in this manner, the money stays within the fund, and the interest stays with the dollars of that fund. So, again, what we're trying to do is create some funds to create some good business practices. And, again, I apologize for the delay, and I'm not trying to force anyone's hand there. But in order to try to get that budget to you by Monday, knowing that these accounts exist will allow me to help put that forward.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Thank you.
Any other councillors have any questions? Councillor Keefe?
I just, Madam President, thank you. I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to call anyone else, but these were in our packet. Most, I mean, there was some new stuff that came in today, and I'm not going to pretend that I know everything about all of it. But we did get this on Friday, so. And a lot of times, especially in, Councillor Rizzo mentions, he's the Ways and Means Chair. He should have some, you know, he wants to be able to look at things and-
Point to personal privilege.
Put attention into the committees, but I got, I mean, my packet had these on Friday.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Rotundo?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yeah, Jesus, God figure. Madam President, I haven't substance yesterday, so I apologize. Unless councillor can tell me how much is going into the account, how much is going to be dedicated to each account, then that would be a great thing to have within the document that we presented, but it was not. So that is part and parcel of-
It's part of the appropriation that you have next, I'm sorry. I didn't combine them because it's an appropriation order, but you have an appropriation-
Right, but you can't tell me what a range is for your workers' compensation insurance, you know, from the idea, can you?
I have, well, I have the appropriations that would replace the budget. So you do have an appropriation order that would substitute for that.
But is it within the document that we have presently? I don't believe I've seen it.
It's one of the next items.
Excuse me, point of information, may I?
Councillor?
So, any appropriations, so for instance, passing these, the past two communications, passing these, we're just adopting the law. This is a law that was established by the state legislature, which means it's not to trick anyone, and it's not to deceive the people of Revere, or to, there's no deceit whatsoever. It's a law for our city to benefit from. And if you can adopt, if we can adopt any better business practice, why not do it? And like he said, why is he going to go ahead and figure out all the appropriations when he doesn't have the okay from the authorizing bodies to go ahead and start creating accounts? I would think it would be more skeptical on his part if he went around and started creating all these accounts without knowing if he had the will of the council. And keep in mind, any appropriations that he goes forward with must be approved by each and every one of us. And each of us, I can speak for myself, we're not going to let something slide if we see an appropriation that isn't right. We all have sharp eyes here.
Madam President, if I may just respond, councillor Keefe, with all due respect to councillor Keefe, who said that he had this since Friday, well, using that same logic, we shouldn't have a committee for anything, then. If we get our package on Friday, why put anything in committee? If we got nothing to talk about, we get it on Friday, we should automatically, we know how to vote it on Monday. So maybe we're spinning our wheels, then, setting up committees. I mean, there is a reason why the city council has subcommittees. And that's so we can discuss issues that come before the various topics that you have so aptly set up committees for, and you've appointed chairpersons for. I mean, if we're going to get communications on Friday and come here Monday night, all experts, and we're going to vote on everything on Monday, well, then we shouldn't have subcommittees. But I beg to differ. I think that when we get something in our package on Friday, I would venture to say all of us aren't sitting all weekend, Saturday and Sunday, studying for 14 hours a day on what we have in front of us. And also, keep in mind, we don't have the professionals such as our auditor here or anybody else, our assessors, and our inspectional services department, and our superintendent of public works. We don't have them to share all this information with over the weekend. So I disagree with the notion that we should be prepared to vote on something on Monday just because we got it on Friday. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Nowosowski?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, in this particular issue, stabilization fund, there's no money involved. What's going to happen here is, when we get the budget, we put the money in these accounts. Okay, now you have a sick leave buyback account, which they'll be able to pay out of with two-thirds vote, okay, with two-thirds vote, when they want the money. The second one, I believe, is unemployment compensation.
No, the OPEB liability, it's for other post-employment benefits. It's for retirees, for retirees' health insurance.
Retirees, okay. Again, we're putting the money in the account later. When we approve the budget, we're putting the money in. This is just establishing a line item in the budget. I don't see a problem with that.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Keefe?
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm not trying to make a back-and-forth. I totally agree with the councillor result. And, you know, we do have, we do have these different meeting subcommittees for that reason. But it would not be out of turn to vote something without going to committee. It happens often. It just happened tonight with an appointment. It happens. And like councillor Morbido mentioned, and Councillor Nowosowski, we're not taking money and spending it today. We're not approving that. It is a legislation that is already in play. I believe it to be a best practice. I'm not an expert. I don't spend every weekend studying up. We do a lot of other things. So I totally understand, and you know what? You have that right, especially as the Ways and Means Chair, and I totally respect that. But this council approves and goes to vote on many things without going to committee. It's not out of turn. This is not the first turn. I just wanted to clarify for the public, because it was mentioned, we just got this. I wanted to make sure everyone knew that most of us got this on Friday. So we did have some time to digest it. We don't just go ahead and approve things for the hell of it. We're very diligent. The committees are very diligent, and I think we're doing a good thing tonight. And if the will of the council is to not do that, then the will of the council will vote it down, and we'll put it into committee, or whatever it may be. Thank you.
So noted. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to state for the record that I do agree with councillor Rizzo that I like to see most things go into committee. However, we have a slight disagreement on these. I see these as a no-brainer. I see these as not something to be discussed that creates an atmosphere that we need a lot. I don't feel I need a lot of discussion on this because they're pretty clear and cut, and it's above board, and it's something that I feel I can vote on without going to committee. That's the only reason. But most times, I do like things to go to committee, especially the Ways and Means Committee. But where there's no real money involved here except a practice, a structure for the budget, I'm comfortable voting on it, and that's why I am. But I'm happy I have him as the Ways and Means Chairman. And when it comes to the dollars and cents, you know, I want to see the stuff go to committee. So this is, we just may see this a different way, but I agree that these should be voted on tonight, and that's my reasoning. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors?
If I may, briefly, I definitely believe in our subcommittees. As the council president, I established our subcommittees, and I am lucky to sit on a board with 10 extremely competent people that I place in certain committees because of their abilities and because of my faith in their abilities to perform in each committee. I defended the appointments committee earlier because I do believe that those are our channels. However, there are circumstances where, if there are no questions, when you put it into committee, if there are still no questions, I don't see it. I think that there are some things that it's extremely important to have committee, and we have committee sessions that are hours long where we can dive really deep into things and ask them. And that's why we have the competent chairs that we have to chair those meetings. So I definitely agree there are circumstances where it's incredibly necessary, and there are some where it is not. In this case, it was the will of the council to move it this evening. So if there are no other questions, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
There's two separate accounts, so there would be two separate votes.
So on the first, in accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 40, Section 5B, shall the city council approve the establishment of a stabilization fund for sick leave buyback?
Councillor Guanasso is absent. Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Rizzo? Yes. Councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Gino?
Yes.
Yes, the stabilization fund has been created.
And on the second?
In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B, shall the city council approve the establishment of a stabilization fund for other post-employment benefits? Councillor Guanasso is absent. Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Gino? Yes, the stabilization fund has been established.
Thank you, councillors. It's nice to see some synergy.
Calendar item number 11, communication from the city auditor relative to free cash appropriations.
Mr. Fiskay?
Okay, here's some cash appropriations, council. Again, a lot of the funds that you've just adopted, there are appropriation orders before you to fund those accounts. I'm here to answer any questions if there are any, but if that goes to committee, I totally respect that, but happy to answer any questions while I'm here.
Councillor Rizzo, do you wish for the appropriations to go to committee?
Madam President, yeah, I mean, we're talking about spending $2 million. I think it should, I think we should all be in agreement that that would be something that we would go to committee with, I would hope.
Ways and Means. Calendar item-
Madam President, if I can go back to file reconsideration separately on the items we just passed, the setups of the new, the items that we just voted on. I have to do it, you know me.
On reconsider- All right, from the top, we'll start with number eight. On reconsideration, are you dropping it? Sorry.
My colleagues assured me they weren't going to file reconsideration. I take them at their word.
Madam President?
Councillor?
If I may, on the item we just put in the Ways and Means.
Yes.
On part, there's two parts to that. One is appropriating new funds. The second part is free cash transfers to three items that, one item that is necessary for us to pay back our snow removal monies that we overspent during the year, which we're allowed to do. The next two items are for two particular projects and items that I think adhere to the city of Revere, specifically the Sandcastle event, which we do every year, and also a one-time donation to the Columbus Day Parade. So I would ask that we pass those so those can happen. And, because they were just free cash items, one-time payments. And, yep. Separate motion here for part two.
So we're asking for a separate motion to take out the-
Snow and Ice.
$125,000, and then the $25,000- For the Columbus Day Parade.
And also the $630,000 for the Snow and Ice, item one.
$630,000 for Snow and Ice, $125,000 for Revere Beach. Okay. Councillor Rizzo?
Yeah, I don't have a prob, I mean, particularly with the Sandcastles coming up, and the Columbus Day Parade, we're not going to have another one for, I think, another couple of years. But, like, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. The snow plowing, I did have some questions about snow plowing this year. I mean, we spent close to, it looks like a million dollars. And I just, I'm just trying to get my head around, you know, that number. And I did have some questions on that, but, you know-
If I may, Madam President, I can yield to that one. If, you know, if we can get the other two out, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
So we'll have to take a motion to take out the Sandcastles and Columbus Day and vote on them separately at this time? Then, yeah. I mean, collectively, but separate from the entire motion.
Can I, just one point I'd like to make. Again, I respect the feeling to put that in committee for Snow and Ice. Just want to let the council know that the $630,000 is the actual deficit that we have. So you can certainly discuss the merits of the plowing and such, but if that appropriation isn't made, it'd have to be raised on the recap. So I just wanted to clarify what that-
Madam President, through you, it's not, it's not, through you, Madam President, to the auditor. You know, it's not, I mean, the money's been spent, it's been allocated, and we need to pay it. I understand that. It's more questions that I have pertaining to the actual amount of work that was done, and, you know, I would just rather be able to process that in subcommittee.
I just wanted to make it clear what the appropriation was for. Was it new money? It was just to fund the deficit.
Right, thank you.
Councillor McKenna?
I know. Quiet all night. Can we also take up the historical society for the roof?
That's the next item.
Okay, thank you.
So we're not quite there yet. So on the Columbus Day Parade and Sandcastles, roll call?
Shall the city council approve transfers from the general fund free cash as follows? $125,000 to Revere Beach Partnership Sandcastle Event, and $25,000 to the Columbus Day Parade. Councillor Guanasso is absent. Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Zambudo is absent, and Council President Gino?
Yes.
Yes, the transfers have been approved. Calendar item number 12, can we, oh, sorry. Calendar item number 12, communication from the city- Calendar item number 12, communication from the city auditor relative to capital improvement stabilization fund appropriations.
I have before you two appropriations from the capital improvement stabilization fund. One is for $100,000 to add lighting at Gibson Park to fund the lights where we got a grant to rebuild that park. So the $100,000 would actually put lighting in Gibson Park. And the $25,000 is for the replacement of the roof at the Revere Historical Society. And I don't have too much information about it. I just imagine the roof is in disrepair. So I'm happy to answer any questions otherwise.
Thank you, Mr. Vizquez. I know McKenna wants to speak on the roof, and Councilor Powers wants to speak on the park. No more comments on Council McKenna, just in favor of it. Councilor Powers?
Yes, Madam President. The reason that this has some sense of urgency to it, they've already got the grant down there, they want to move ahead. There are certain things that have to be done with regard to bringing wiring in there and repaving, and so it's very important to the residents of the Point of Pines that utilize that park, that this money be appropriated as quickly as possible so we can get started down. I'd like to see that started this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rizzo, any commentary on?
No, to be honest with you, this is coming out of a stabilization fund appropriate, it's a stabilization fund appropriation out of the capital improvement stabilization. And these two matters here, to me, are very appropriate use for the capital improvement fund stabilization fund money. So I would, if it's the will of the council to vote favorably, Your Honor, I support it.
Thank you. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to say something about the Historical Society. I went there a couple of years ago, we had meetings with the BIC, and there was really nothing there. And then I just went for, a couple of weeks ago, for House's, Councilor House's dedication, and I couldn't believe the transformation of this building. And we only have one of them, and it's, you know, we're trying to fix it up, and we have to maintain it. So I really think this, I'm in favor of this tonight, and I really think we should vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McKenna. Any other counselors have any questions? This time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the funding for Gibson Park and the Historical Society's roof. Madam Clerk?
Shall the City Council approve appropriations from the capital improvement stabilization fund as follows: $100,000 for installation of lighting at Gibson Park and $25,000 for the replacement of the roof at the Revere Historical Society? Councilor Guanasso is absent. Councilor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the transfers have been approved.
Anything else that the council wishes to take up while under suspension? Going once? Going twice? Regular order of business?
DPW Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, the DPW Subcommittee met this afternoon, and we brought up two items. One was on the flooding down in Sagamore and Dunn Road area, and the committee had several experts present, and they are moving forward with correcting the item. Again, it's something with the county ditches, the county ditches in general that are not cleaned, and that the main issue is that the eastern county ditch has to be cleaned before a lot of the flooding is alleviated. So Superintendent Public Works, Paula Genzio, CDM Smith, and our city engineer state, they are working on it. There is some movement on it, and if there's any other information that's going to be brought to us, then we'll bring it back up into the committee. So the committee voted to recommend to place this on file.
This will be placed on file. If there are no other questions?
Madam President, the second item was the flooding on Asti Avenue. Again, we had CDM Smith, Superintendent Public Works, and city engineer present, and one of the big issues was that the ditch along the highway behind Asti Ave is on state property, Mass Highway, MassDOT property. And our Superintendent Public Works stated that he is willing to have his staff man the cleaning of the trash racks along Route 1 in the Asti Ave area when there is a large storm going to be present. He guaranteed that he will have staff available. Overtime was not an issue as far as he was concerned, but the members of the committee felt that it should stay in committee because to oversee and have a walk-through, have a site visit of the area. So the counselors, CDM Smith, Superintendent Public Works, and we had asked the clerk to send letters to invite a member of MassDOT from District 4, I believe, that's in charge of Mass highways and cleaning the ditches, and also DCR, because a lot of the waterways are DCR waterways. So we were asking her to set up a meeting with the council and these people, and may also add Representative Vincent. We felt that she could make that extra effort to get someone from MassDOT down to this meeting when it happened, because they seem not to want to come to our meetings here at the City Hall in the council chamber. So the committee voted to have that site visit with the designated personnel, but keep the issue in committee.
This will remain in committee. Thank you, Counselor.
Calendar item number seven, communication from the planning board submitting its recommendations for CZ-1805 relative to duplex dwellings in heights within the 100-year floodplain.
Any counselors wishing to speak?
So where is that now, do we know? Is that in ZBA or committees?
That item CZ-1805, that is currently in the zoning subcommittee.
So we can attach this to the existing...
Okay, move there, we attach it to that. Yes.
So this will make, will make a part of CZ-1805, and it will go to our zoning
Calendar item number 14, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of LaMontaigne Brothers, Inc., as a licensed drainlayer. Calendar item number 15, communication from the Director of Finance relative to the extension of contracts for AMR water metering system.
I know our Director of Finance was unable to attend this evening. He did state his, he's a proponent for this, and reached out to us early this evening. Are there any counselors?
If I may, Madam President, I attended several meetings of the Water Meter Committee, and what's happening is because I think there's about 400 meters in the city that people did not respond to allow the city to go in and replace the new meters. So the timing, the timing did not work with the current contract with the installing company. So they are asking for an extension to allow us to kind of force our way into those buildings and get those new meters in place. So I would ask that we approve this.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors have any questions on this motion? I'll ask Madam Clerk to call the roll.
Shall the City Council approve a seven-month extension for the following contracts related to the AMR water meter installation program? CDM Smith, contract number DPCD 2013-105; EJ Prescott, Inc., for water meter supply, contract number MUN 2013-1021A; EJ Prescott, Inc., for AMI Systems, contract number MUN 2013-1022; Bay State Wind Supply Company for water meter installation, contract number MUN 2013-1023; Brothers Electrical Company for electrical services, contract number DPCD 2016-1003; and Spencer Contracting for curb stop, cleanout, and leak detection, contract number MUN 2017-1001. Councilor Guanasso is absent. Councilor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the contract extensions have been awarded. Onto motions. Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Council Rotundo that the mayor direct the fire chief to provide the city council with the number of medical calls over a two-year period, as well as the actual, as well as the number of actual fires.
Counselor Rotundo?
Speaks for itself.
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Council Rotundo that the following offices be located at the new DPW facility: engineering, inspectional services, fire prevention, and a clerk's desk. It would ensure and improve streamlining of permits and maintaining of records.
Madam President, I will tell you, I do have several motions that I do want to speak on, but if you would give me the leeway, speaks for itself.
Madam President, if I may. Madam President, in some way, this is a good motion, but we have to realize the more we put into this building, the more it's going to cost. So there are some items that I do agree with, maybe engineering, and maybe inspectional service, but not fire prevention.
Committee.
And, you know, it's not a bad thing to put more groups together, especially with the site plan review people. They all work together on a daily basis. Why not have them sit together on a daily basis? But we have to look at that and see what the numbers are when we get through. Thank you.
Counselor?
For order committee?
Send this to the DPW? Counselor Novoselsky's committee?
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselor Keefe that the mayor request the Board of Health and Inspection Services to address the city council with a plan and explanation of the ongoing efforts to attack the current rodent issues throughout our city.
Counselor Keefe?
Thank you, Madam President. This issue's certainly garnered some attention, and I just want to make it clear that, you know, the city council, I looked back over the last two years, has had almost a dozen motions and communications in regards to trying to address this issue. So it kind of, to me, I look at it as, do we have a funding issue, or do we have an enforcement issue? Or, you know, so it probably falls in the line with a little bit of both. I'd like to see if the Board of Health and the Inspection Service Department and the departments that are involved in this area come to the city council, present their plan of attack, give, and the next motion, Council Rotundo offers actually some really good solutions that might be worth looking into. Give us some real data and metrics on what is happening out there, and maybe when, if there's a metric that we can measure and see where two months, three months, next year, down the road, how this problem is being resolved. And I'd like to hear from that department on what the goals are to address this, because, you know, it's an ugly issue. No one here likes talking about rodents, and we're all faced with it. But this is a quality of life issue for our residents. We're here to serve our residents, and I just want to make sure that the departments that are responsible to help in that area are held accountable. Doesn't mean they're doing a bad job, but I'd like to have a plan in place. If there was a crime issue, I'd be asking the police department to come up here and talk to us about what's going on. If there was a fire issue, same thing with the, whatever department's involved. I think that the Board of Health or the Inspection Service Department needs to come up here and talk to us about what's going on in the city. Thank you.
Motion. Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Morabito?
I reached out to Nick Cadenazzo in Inspection Services. I wanted to know what they were currently doing as a measure to be proactive. So he said they bait the problem properties on a one-time basis. A resident calls, if a resident calls saying they have seen rodents in their yard, they will send one of their inspectors by to see if they have borrows in their yard. If they do, they'll do one-time baiting with one bait box, and the next time, it is on them. So they have to pay for it. But I think both my colleagues put in great motions, because one's actually showing that we want to move forward immediately and be more aggressive with our approach. And Counselor Rotundo's motion is giving some ideas. So working together, I think we need to move forward quickly this year and be more aggressive.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak on this? Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a great motion, and it's the right time to do it. I know, in my ward, I put motions in a couple of years ago, and it's been a problem that has increased drastically throughout the city, I believe. And I know people, again, like you said, people don't like to talk about rodents. But, I mean, it's there, people, it's there. I mean, it's, and I think the administration has to come up with an answer and try to solve it before, because it's only going to get worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselsky, then Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, the problem's here, whether we like it or not. And there's several issues. You know, I've seen them in my neighborhood, they're all over my neighborhood. I've seen them myself running across the street, running from yard to yard. Unfortunately, it's very difficult to be proactive, you know, and most of the times, we're reactive, just like with the baiting. Some people call, and they say, and they'll bait. But with all the construction going on, with all the sewer cleaning and the sewer relining, they live there. They live along the railroad tracks, they live in the, along Atwood Street, Dashwood, all those streets, along Revere Street, along the waterways. They all live there. Now, realizing too, all these developers are coming in and building along, close to these locations, and forcing these rodents out of them. And they're looking for new homes. It's just like the coyotes are coming out of the woods because they're taking over the woodlands and moving them out. It's a very, very difficult situation, you know, and, you know, I don't mind looking into it, but I don't believe there is a real true answer, other than another issue is the way people keep their trash buckets. I have seen trash buckets. People have a 64-gallon flip-top thing, but it's overflowing. And if they have four apartments and they only have two buckets, you know, and, you know, I hate to throw people under a bus, but, you know, the Revere Housing Authority, you know, I have down in my neighborhood, the Garfield Elliott Projects, the building down there, and the barrels down there are always overflowing. Now, I understand they're going to be getting dumpsters instead of barrels, which is okay, but they still have to bait. Everybody has to bait. I know it costs a lot of money. You know, it cost me almost $250 to do my own property, you know, and it's about 50 bucks a month after that. So I don't mind listening to Nick and how people want to handle it, but we have to protect, we have to protect ourselves also and do the right thing. Get more barrels for your homes, make sure they have hard covers on them so the rodents can't get in there. So I look forward to hearing this. I don't know if we're going to bring them right up to the council or put them in one of the committees and hear it there, but I'd like to hear what the proper authorities have to say. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Oh, Counselor Powers, and then we'll put it on.
Thank you, Madam President. This has become a real serious issue in the city. And it's not that it's something new, but it's become more serious. Now, I remember many years ago, we had a rodent exterminator in the city, Charlie Colella. And that was his responsibility. If there was one person, that if a rodent call came in, they addressed it. And I think we may have to be getting back to that same thing. Now, one person that is knowledgeable, perhaps someone that's...
Now, one person that is knowledgeable, perhaps someone that's a retiree from an exterminating company, but someone that knows the business and can go out there and answer those calls one by one and make sure that the properties are fully abated, not just one bait box, I don't think that does the trick. I think if you have a, you go out to a property and you see several holes going into the foundation, you know you need more than one bait box out there. You maybe need three or four to end that problem. And we face a very unique situation. I know in Ward Five, we have Eastern County Ditch, we have the marsh on North Shore Road, it butts up to Ward Three, we've got the ditch in Ward Two. We've got some serious problems, and I think that has to be addressed, just like if you had a crime spree somewhere. You need to address this, and I would ask that, I think, the mayor and the Board of Health and the city council all meet and discuss the best way to handle this. And I think the best way, my own personal opinion is hire somebody that's knowledgeable with rodent control. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Anyone else?
Madam President?
Counselor.
It may make sense, before we open it up, because I believe there are residents here that'd like to speak, and I think it might make sense, unless there's other counselors that'd like to speak on Councilor Keith's motion, it might make sense to take up calendar item number twenty, falls along the same lines, and then we can open it up, because I'd like to speak on that motion specifically, and then, and then hopefully, some of the residents who sat here patiently all night can get up and speak about the issue also.
I think that's a good point. That way, we can cover both at once, and I'll, well, I'll comment on, they're so similar in nature, both of them at the same time. So for Counselor Keith's motion, I ask that we vote on it this evening so that we can get the organization before us and speak to us regarding this. So on the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item number twenty.
Motion presented by Council Rotundo that the city of Revere take the following approaches to curb and quell the rodent problem. The city needs a three-pronged approach based on science before the issue becomes out of control. I propose the following tactics. One, that the city purchase two thousand bait boxes. Two, invest in placing box owls in areas of overproliferation. Three, utilize science of sterilization techniques as performed in New York City. And four, to work with our neighboring cities to follow similar techniques as rats do not recognize city boundaries.
Thank you. I hate to say it, I really think that it's out of control right now. I spent the past year, almost a year and a half, with Wayne Rose throughout the area. Just on the Coolidge Street project area alone, I counted well over two hundred different holes. That's two hundred holes. And I can guarantee you, and that was just in one area. I've been to different parts of the city, to different places of housing in which there's holes. Council Novoselsky mentioned, again, Revere Housing, in which there's issues. There have been, like, rats this size, you know, that we see. Matter of fact, I was, I was at Wayne's house, and literally, the old woman that we were near thought it was a cat. Kid you not, we had to tell her it wasn't a cat. And that's pretty scary. These are holes that are actually by a school. We won't say what school. Our children are there, you know? My children are there. So I'm a little peeved that these are where children are. Now, people have to remember that over here, the Susan B. Anthony is one of them. And then, the issue is this right here. People, in fact, Revere Housing, not maintaining their property. And this is, this is a big issue. And then when you get a dead rat, no one's picking them up. Now, I'm a nurse, and I'm going to tell you that this is a public safety issue, it's a public health issue, and it's out of control. They carry diseases. These diseases can be passed on to human beings. They can be passed on to animals as well. It's something that needs to be dealt with affirmatively and effectively, and it needs to be done now. I can honestly say that, and I do want to bring something up which is a tangent, but since Wayne Rose has brought this to my attention a year and a half ago, he's been retaliated against, and that's very problematic. And there's been statements made against his person, which are untrue and unfounded. And that said, every time he's brought something to my attention regarding issues in the projects, it seems like he's being retaliated against. And this is, you know, a guy basically trying to make his neighborhood safe for everybody. And this is a problem. There are people in the audience right now that can speak to the issue of rats in their neighborhood. I don't know how many times I've gotten phone calls in the past year about it and asking people to go down and, you know, having exterminated there, some of them have asked the city in advance to get baited, and they've done that, so it was a step that I didn't have to take. But at what point do we take a very, very large approach to this? Because it is out of control. And if I see two hundred holes in a particular area, that tells me that there's proliferation, that you can't control it with just baiting. It just doesn't, it's not going to fix that problem. You know what I mean? You've got problems anywhere where you have a water source, where you have a culvert, wherever you have food sources. People need to be reprimanded for not putting in the mint bags, for not covering their trash. That's the problem. It's the people, and I'm sorry, I mean, it is what it is. And, you know, I'm going to treat you like family. If you're doing something wrong, you're doing something wrong. People are not covering their trash. Businesses are not covering their trash. City government is not covering their trash, and neither is the Housing Authority. So that needs to stop. If not, we're going to have more rats, and more old ladies thinking that rats are cats, and that's disgusting. And it might seem funny, but sure is, you know what? Me and Wayne had to stop her from going near the damn thing. I mean, that's crazy, but, you know, there's a validity there. And that said, we need to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Council Rotundo called it a public health issue. I'm going to take it a step further, Madam President, and I'm going to call it a public health crisis. I mean, this is an issue that is transcending across the entire city. In fact, you know, just this morning, I got in my car at about seven thirty, I backed up, and a rat ran from underneath my car. I've never seen a rat around my house, ever. And, you know, there's a lot of areas around the city, people maintain their property, they keep things up, but it has now exploded across the city. And I can remember back, Madam President, when I took over back in two thousand twelve as mayor, we had a significant, you know, issue, nowhere near what it is today, but it was an issue. And surrounding cities and towns were having issues. And we got together as a task force, and we were able to, to, to kind of, you know, squash it down to the point, you're never going to eliminate it, but you can certainly, you know, mitigate it and minimize it, so everybody's not dealing with it across the city. We can, you know, and then people who have an issue, we can more focus on them. Right now, to get bait boxes, you need to get ten thousand of them and put them in everyone's backyard, because that's the extent of the problem right now. Everybody is dealing with it. And, you know, not to, I'm not, you know, this is an issue that, that where it's affecting so many people, we can't, we have to take our heads out of the sand and understand that all this disruption of land is causing the displacement of these rodents. And, you know, and it's not just, it's not just the onslaught of development, but it's also the digging up of the roads. I've been driving around the city, I've never seen more detour signs in my life that lead to nowhere, actually. You get a detour, a detour sign, you go down, and who knows where you go from there. So there's, there's not a coordination, I think, of efforts in terms of digging up, whether it's for gas pipes, water sewer, there's so many different areas of the city that are being dug, that it's causing this proliferation. And, you know, we just put to a public hearing almost seven million dollars for C D M Smith to do our consent decree, which I understand, we're bound by the EPA and the Department of Justice to follow. But we're going to spend seven million dollars just continue to dig up the streets, and we've got our own residents that have to deal with this awful problem. I mean, you know, I'm speaking on a personal level, you know, you know, it was very unnerving to back my car out and see a rat run from under my car and into my yard. I mean, it's just, you know, and I can imagine, there's people here we're going to hear from tonight who've had to experience the same thing, and I venture to say hundreds, if not thousands, of others across the city that, that maybe weren't aware of the meeting or didn't want to take the time or couldn't take the time for whatever reason to come up and have, and be heard by us in the city. But this is a problem. If we're going to spend seven million dollars to continue to dig up the streets, and we're going to continue to grant special permits for apartments and for other type of development that just continues to exacerbate it, then we better be prepared to spend money to curb this problem. We're going to need every resource possible, because this is, Madam President, it is a public health crisis. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Madam President. It is a bad situation. But just as, if I can just retro a second on the last motion, can we make sure we invite somebody from the Housing Authority to be present at that meeting, and also the Superintendent of Public Works, and also, believe it or not, C D M Smith, because they're the ones that are putting the liners on the sewer pipes. And they run into this stuff all the time. So I think if we heard from them and they heard from us, we may be able to get some more meat to our situation.
I think it's a great recommendation. Counselor?
If we could get the Director of Housing, I would say Dean Harris has been excellent trying to solve the problem with the limited means that he has, but we need to get the Director up here and find out what the heck's going on. What's at Coolidge Street is an abomination, period.
Thank you, counselors. Any other counselors? Counselor Morbido?
I spoke to one of the residents who were here this evening, and he brought to my attention how some cities are using dry ice to exterminate rats. New York City is doing it. D C is doing it. So I'm actually going to reach out to a couple of counselors in New York City and D C, see if they'll reach back and see how it's working. So I think feedback is very important, because we have a couple of ideas that Council Rotundo submitted, baiting versus owls. You can't do both. You can't use a combinational approach, because if you're baiting the rats, if they're poisonous, if they're eating the poison and the owls eat them, then you're losing your profit, right? You're losing your money right there. So there goes your one thousand dollar owl. So...
The one that catches the one in the neighborhood.
What was that?
The one that catches the one in the neighborhood with the poison.
That as well, so. So, so the poisonous approach is not good. So one, like, at first, looking at the, using an owl to kill rodents, people thought it was bizarre, but it's become more of a popular mainstream way to deal with the rodent issues because it works, and it's a natural way of doing it. The only problems with that is, I've read stories, you can't really centralize owls, like, you can't centralize the issue and be like, okay, you're going to stay in Ward Four, and you're going to eat all the rats in Ward Four. You can't centralize them. We might be buying owls, and they might end up in Saugus, so. So I think if we can all do our part and reach out to counselors in other cities and states where they're implementing that program, I'm sure they'll be glad to talk to us. That's what I'm going to do in the future.
Thank you, Counselor.
So, Madam President?
Counselor.
So actually, if you look at the document, what I wrote in the motion, it's from New York City, and I actually spoke to their Inspektional Services. So the box owls in areas of proliferation, you're right, you would not use baits there, you would use the owls. The owls would naturally feed off the prey there. If you've got two hundred holes, they're going to stay there. They literally hear them. That's how they, that's how they go after them. They hear them. And that's part of the process. And yeah, we could probably lose a few over to Saugus, I have no doubt about that. But again, it's just an idea to let the, you know, the professionals deal with it and so forth. The sterilization thing, when Mayor de Blasio put that through, he did it up in the upper part of Central Park where the broncses, and it, like, killed a whole generation of female mice, which they progenerate, I think it was close to, what, fifteen hundred a year, something crazy like that. Fifty thousand, one female, loses fifteen thousand descendants a year. So, but that said, I think we should, after I'm going to stop speaking, so that the people can speak.
Thank you. Any other counselors have any questions?
If I may briefly speak before we ask everyone to come up. I think this is a great motion on behalf of Counselor Keith and Counselor Rotundo. Similar to Counselor Rizzo, I live just a couple of blocks away, and I've lived in my house my whole life, and I've never seen a rat. And driving to work last week, I had a giant dead one right in front of, near my front door, and it was awful. And I know that it's something that every part of the city's dealing with. Ward Four, Counselor Keith's been fighting it since he got elected. His ward was hit, one of the worst. Ward Five as well. But it's coming into areas that have never seen this problem before, because we're not near the water, and we have a different demographic, not as many restaurants in commercial areas, but it's affecting the city, and I definitely think it is. It's a huge health concern, and it's a huge issue for our residents, for people with pets that are walking their dogs in these areas, that have cats or any other small animals. It's a huge, huge issue. I know I walk my dog right there every single day. My grandmother does, too. We are all there, and that's not something you want to walk out of your house and see, a live rat running across the street or a dead one. They're both equally disgusting. I think it's something that, again, it's a difficult situation, because we're stuck in a position where we're reactive, and it's very difficult to be proactive, because we're at a point where we're past that. There are many issues here. I think that getting the experts that we need to give us the best advice, maybe having a company or someone come in and say, you know, look at the city as a whole and see what, what specific areas need specific treatments, that may work. But it's much larger than the city and much larger than our means, so I hope that this will be the first step to get this issue at least down to a manageable level, because right now, it's really bad. At this time, I'll ask anyone that wishes to speak to just line up amongst yourselves, and as you approach, just state your name and address for the record, but if you could just please line up and...
Wayne Rose, one eighty-nine Coolidge Street. I've been doing a lot of research on the rats. One female rat has fifteen thousand descendants a year. So if seven thousand of those are female, you've got seven thousand times fifteen out of one rat family. And the numbers get alarming as you go on. After three years, there's over a million rats. I live in public housing. I've been trying to get them to do something. I have pictures of all kinds of stuff here, rat holes, rat burrows in yards. If you want to see, I'll give them to you. One of the biggest violators that I found is Revere Housing Authority. The Board of Health tells me they can't do anything, because they're a private entity. I think that's bull. The state health inspector seemed to think it was bull, too. Carl Hyman Towers in back of it flooded with rats. The property that it butts at, that's unsurely have rats. The Susan B. Anthony, there's plenty of rats. These things have about twelve different diseases that they carry, and they're being spread throughout Revere. The dust from the urine and feces alone can cause so many problems for children, it isn't funny. I called our local health inspector for eight ninety-one, I believe, Broadway. There's so many holes in that guy's yard, it looks like gophers are there. There's rats at nighttime. You go stand over by Sabelle's, look across the street, there's rats going everywhere. This shouldn't be. It shouldn't be. Something needs to be done.
Madam President? I got a question for him. So for about, so you brought this to my attention about a year and a half ago. What's happened to you?
Housing filed to evict me. Pay my rent all the time.
And they wish, and...
They get a retaliated base case against me. That's what they have.
And they said that you actually had an older gentleman living in your house...
They said I had somebody living with me.
Which I know wasn't the case, but that said, so that's what's happened.
Counselor, with all due respect, let's stay to the issue. We're not going to get personal.
No, no, no. I mean, but this is, this is the issue. He has come forward regarding this issue. He's been retaliated against. False accusations were made against him, and quite frankly, I'm going to protect him on this one, because I've been to his house, and what they had said is not true.
Counselor, that's understood, and you can do that on another platform, but this is not the appropriate time or place.
But anyways, back to rats. They're out of control. Something needs to be done. They're under, they're under head start. They're, I'm being told they ran a high school. I don't see anything being done there. So, we, we need help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Coco, 36 East Street. I'm glad I got to come up here on this issue because twice before, he was up before the Council on something else that has to do with this issue. And that's the, the new buildings that went up by the, called the Vanguard. Is that what it is? The Vanguard, right? I've addressed the Council twice in the past six months about the cars parked alongside of that building. They have no right being parked there. You can't find a parking space from there to the T station because you know why? They have to pay $100 to park, they're residents, and they have to pay $100 to park in the building.
So we're on rats?
No, I know where you are, but I'm, this has got to do with it.
Okay.
Okay? Just let me finish. Okay, so I addressed the Council and they said they were gonna have somebody, there was somebody who's gonna look into it, somebody who's gonna do something about it. As a matter of fact, the last time, they said they were in the process of gonna be the towing or tagging down there. You go down there now, you can't find a space. So what I'm saying is, when this building, before this building was built, I was here, I stood right here, and you people told me that there was supposed to be a parking spot for every unit. Why are these cars parked on the street? So now we go back to the, now we come to the rats, okay? The, the reason why I, I disagree with Ira, I understand everything you said was true about the rats, but I disagree with you, the reason why they're, they're so populated here is because of all the, I think if I had enough money, they'd let me build on the beach. In the last two years, there've been more buildings put up in this city than I've ever seen before. And I think if I had enough money, they'd let me build on the beach. The reason that we got all the rats is because everything's being dug up. That's the reason. 100%. Not trash, yeah, trash, they trash, but they were eaten. But that's not the reason that we're getting this population of rats. I went, I go to the gym, I don't know how many people are up 4:30, 5:00 in the morning. I go to the gym every other day in the morning. I'm on Chargers Street. And I see them running around, right in front of Planet Fitness. There's like 20 of them running around there. I'm scared to get out of my goddamn car. Seriously. Now, in, in 40 years, I've never had, I've had mice in my pool, never had a rat in my pool. Just last week, I found two big rats in my pool, dead. Okay? That tells you what the rat population is like. And they wanna do everything for the people that wanna bring the money into the city to build, that's not really bringing money into the city. They're just building and taking money out of the city because it's causing burden on the city. All these buildings are causing burden on the city. Our school systems, everything else, and the traffic, as I stand here right now, I'll come here a year from now, and I'll tell you, you ain't gonna be able to move on Revere Street or on Revere Beach Boulevard because of the traffic. And not only that, but God help them people, them old people down there that need an ambulance and have to get to the hospital because they're dying, because they're gonna die.
We're gonna stick to the rats, but totally understood, very well noted. We understand your point.
The thing is, is we can't wait, like, like Mr. Keefe said, he addressed the problem two years ago. We can't wait. We can't, we can't even wait a week. We have to do something about this right now. Because like he said, they're offspring, I mean, they have babies.
Yeah.
Millions of them. And they're only gonna keep coming, 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 coming. We have to do something about it now. It's, I've never seen anything like it. I went by the Paul Revere School yesterday on the way to the gym. They were all over the yard. What about the kids? What are these kids cornering? You're talking about the cats getting killed. What about the kids? One of them cornering a rat and the rat attacking a kid. That's what's gonna happen next. So, somebody's gotta do something about it.
Thank you.
Councilmember John Goodwin. I live on Prospect Avenue. Years earlier, I was a Rodent Control Inspector for the City of Boston, Boston Environmental Health Improvement Program, which subsequently became the Inspeccional Services Department. All right? Now, the only way you're really gonna battle these rats is your inspectors, or inspector needs to have a team of workers with him that go out on a daily basis to inspect this city block by block. They go out with a, they have to inspect the premises, all the, all the houses for proper storage of trash, locate, they need to be educated on it though. They need to know what to look for. Rodent runways, the burrows, feces, they use the same runways all the time. They're not hard to track, where they're coming from, where they're going. Once, this has all been established, and you can't do just one block in the city because somebody says, oh, I got rats. You need to do the entire city. It has to be done. Everything needs to be documented, what the inspectors found, the, the amount of burrows, empty lots need to be cleaned out and baited. The holes need to be baited. With whatever they're using out there now compared to what they were using years ago, I'm not sure of, there's plenty of different poisons for them. All right? Now, without having it done block by block, everything inspected, the owners of the properties, whether they're businesses or homes, reminded and then cited on a secondary inspection on what their, all the discrepancies are on their properties. It, it just has to go on and on until you start to see the numbers come down. There's a gentleman in Boston that I came up in that business with, we're pottin' it up and spend most of our time out in Blue Hill Avenue area, educating the people out there because some of those people like to grow corn on their lawns. And to see rats on cornstalks at 12 o'clock in the afternoon, you know you got a problem. Composting, the whole part of it. John Meany, he now runs, he's the Director of the Health Department in the City of Boston. He's very accessible. He can help as far as letting you people know how to educate your inspectors. Without that education, they're going out there blind and not knowing what to look for or how to attack it. You can have an exterminator come in at any given time and sure, he's gonna bait so-and-so's block because he's lived there the longest and made the most noise. But the whole city has to be done.
Thank you for your time and fear, but that was really great, and hopefully we can resource, use some of those contacts and resources.
How you doing?
Hi.
I prefer not to give my name or my address under fear of retaliation. All right?
I think it has to be given to the clerk at least.
The what?
It has to be provided to the clerk.
Oh, I'll tell her after. No, the problem. Oh, I don't care if people gut my face, you know? It is what it is. All right? My name is Jim. All right? I've lived in Revere all my life. I've been born here. Growing up as a kid, I used to play at a dirt field next to my house on Winterbath. Never, ever seen a rat. Seen a lot of bees. Got stung a lot. Never seen any rats. The rats you have today, like, the guy would put a box out, I said, yo buddy, come here, look at this. I made him walk the next house over, and at the corner of the house, there was 25 holes. He goes, oh, I'll put a box. Yeah, I said, no, just get the bucket of things, throw them in the hole. Save yourself the waste of time with the box. Put them in the hole so they'll eat them. There's no rats right near that house no more. All right? But I see a lot of them there, my unit. The house behind me on the hill, it's like abandoned property, maybe, but it's fenced off as one guy's property. And they had a tornado come through, they just pushed everything over to one side. Rats are coming out of there. Now, if I throw a match in there, I'll get arrested for arson, right? This guy's gotta go, make this guy clean his property up, you know? And if you have an inspection department for the Board of Health, what's the guy do all day? You know, what's he doing all day? Sitting behind his desk? Is he going out to these restaurants? Because I, me myself, I go out, I go in a restaurant, the first thing I do is I smell. If it smelled horrible, I walk out the door. I won't eat there. And I bet you places like that, you look out back by the dumpster and it's filthy. You know, they have to keep their stuff clean too. You know? I mean, I, my daughter wanted to plant some, a garden this summer. I said, we can't because of the rats. Do you know? They gotta do something with the rats. I know it's gonna cost money, but for, you know, the last 20 years I've been paying a gas tax, really haven't seen the roads improve that much. So some of that money's gonna be around somewhere to tackle the rats. And when you hire a company to tackle the rats, make sure the company has enough employees that they can get one part of the town in one day. You know what I mean? Sort of like Vietnam when they carpet bombed everything? You gotta take an approach like that on it to get it in control.
And I'm just arguing, it's pretty bad. There's like a lot of trash.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, my neighbors, they don't know what a cover is, but you come look at mine, both covers are on there, the lid's closed. And there's no burrows next door to my house because it's clean.
Thank you.
I holler at my neighbors when they make a mess.
Thank you. And again, if you could please provide that information of the clerk for the record. And I will say, in response to that, our Inspeccional Services Department is very, very, very responsive. There have been any issues where I've called Nick and he's called me back in less than 20 minutes. So if there is something, if you report it, we can address it. But if we don't know the address, we don't know the property, we don't know what the issue is, we can't help you. So please feel free to reach out to your Counselors. We can get the message conveyed if you're having an issue getting it. Just email us, call us, let us know the address that's being affected so we can send an inspector out there. In the years I've been on this Council, I've never had an issue where Inspeccional Services has not responded to me within 24 hours and given me an update on what's happening. So I will say, again, we're talking. Thank you. So, please report it because if things are not being reported, we cannot be effective in helping you find a solution. So that is my advice to everyone watching.
Are they able to do the whole city?
Counselor? Any other Counselors? Counselor?
If I may, Madam President, when you report something, you don't have to call us. 311. I repeat that again. Revere 311. You can call 781-286-8311. That gets you to a, a live person. They will write it up for you. Give them the address and it'll go right to Inspeccional Services, and they will do their job, and they're out in the road all the time. I don't care what anybody says. These guys are working hard. And so they're out there, they're taking care of the restaurants, they're fining them, they're paying them, closing them. I know they're doing their job. So, you know, I, I hate for people to make accusations, you know, beyond, above and beyond what they know. But I know our guys and gals are working and working real hard.
Agreed, Counselor. Anyone else? Hi.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Good, thank you. Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I just wanted to come up and say thank you to Counselor Keefe and Counselor Rotundo for putting these motions forward. These motions are continuous, it seems, over the past two years. This keeps coming up. I will say that this is a major quality of life as well as health risk to our residents. I wanted to leave you all with two stories that have hung with me. Last year, I spoke with a woman on Ford Street. She had bricks on her barrel top. I said, why do you have that? She said, you think that's bad? Take a look at my basement window. I took a look. She explained to me rats were coming in her basement window to stay warm in the winter. She had to put up a metal grate, so it's costing our residents a good deal of money. The second just happened Memorial Day weekend. A friend of mine on Carrie Ave opened his grill, found a big dead rat. So I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lampadecchio.
Who oversees the Housing Authority? Who makes them do their job? Because the Board of Health says they can't make them do it. So when Ira says they're out there doing their job, they're not because no one can make housing do their job. Who does?
It's definitely the state. I don't know a point person, but I definitely can, we can look into that. Ira might know more than I.
Department of Public Health, come on with the mess.
I called the state, but how come you guys as a whole body can't make the Housing Authority act, especially on a health risk? That's ludicrous.
Well, I think part of this motion is to get the people we need before so that we can act. So we're in the process of getting that done. It's terrible. I've been up here for six years, and we've been talking about it since I've been up here. So maybe if we started it six years ago, we'd be in a better position now. But unfortunately, we're not. We're in the situation we're in, and we're forced to react, which is what we are doing. So if there are no other questions...
Madam President, if I could just, if I could just add to, to Wayne's question, you know, we have federal housing in Revere, we've got state housing in Revere. I mean, maybe we could start by sending a letter directly to the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development, Jay Ash, and see, explain to him the problem that the city is facing, and maybe at least from that portion of, of our, of our problem, maybe the state can step in and start attacking that problem with their resources. Because as far as I'm concerned, I, I heard some positive comments about our Inspeccional Services Department, and they're very true. I, I, I have, I have a lot of confidence and faith in them. But I think this problem is large enough that we need to bring in an outside independent contractor. We can't lay that on them. I think the problem has gone too far, and we need to, we need to ask for outside independent help from an independent contractor on a massive scale. Like I say, you know, this is a, you know, we're talking about quality of life and public health. So, you know, I think really, you know, this is something that we need to team up with the administration and put our heads together. We've got free cash here, we've got stabilization money, you know, it's sitting there, you know, we're, you know, obviously we wanna spend our money the right way. We spent some time talking about that. There is no better way than I can think of right now, given the conditions in this city, to spend as much money as it takes to get rid of this rat problem. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counselors Rizzo and Janino, that a certificate of commendation be awarded to Donald Goodwin for his many years of dedicated service to the residents of the City of Revere in his capacity as Superintendent of Public Works and as a former elected official.
I'll let Counselor Rizzo speak quick, and then I will as well, and then we'll save our comments for that night.
Madam President, I think this motion essentially speaks for itself. Don Goodwin has given a major part of his life in public service in, in various capacities, and I'm proud to co-sponsor this motion with you.
Any other Counselors? I'll save my comments that night, just very quickly. Seeing the enthusiasm that Superintendent Goodwin had when he handed what he does over to Paul Revere, I think is what really sparked this motion, and his dedication and real passion for the city is what sparked this. So we look forward to that. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Counselor Novoselsky, that the mayor request National Grid to have their contractor who replaced new gas pipes on North Shore Road in War II to immediately remove all of their equipment from Dana Street, Walcott Road, and Curtis Road. The equipment is taking up parking for residents and not allowing street sweeping to occur. They are no longer working in the neighborhood. Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, as everybody knows, National Grid is all over the city of Revere. And everybody knows that North Shore Road from the Revere Beach Parkway down to Centennial Ave is a disgrace. They've dug up the road, they've patched it, they've dug up the road, they patched it, they dug up the sidewalks, they patched them. But what's happening is they've used our streets as staging areas. And I told them, I don't like this. Although I met with them today, I still want this motion to go through. They are removing some equipment from Dana Street, and they even put porta-potties in front of people's houses. Now, totally out of line. Now, I told them today, and as of, and I, again, I still want this letter to go to them, as of this afternoon, they will be removing them tomorrow. Now, some of the vehicles will be moved, Dana Street will be cleared, hopefully in the next couple days. Walcott Road, they had a vehicle parked on a light sensor, and the light, the traffic lights were going on and off, driving people nuts. So I got them to move those pieces of equipment, but they're still gonna use our, their neighborhood of Walcott Road, Clark Road, and Curtis Road as a staging area while they're doing their work on North Shore Road to connect the lines to the new pipes. to connect the lines to the new pipes. So they're gonna be back there. You know, they'll be gone for a little while around July 4th, but they're gonna be back. So I did make a suggestion to them to contact Suffolk Downs to move their equipment over there. "Well, we don't have any money." I don't care how much money you don't have. You have it. National Grid is rich. They're rich on our electricity bills. So hopefully they'll be able to work with H Y M to get them out of there. But this was totally out of line. You know, we can't clean our streets, we can't park our cars, all because of this construction equipment. And I also feel that they should be tagged that night because now you got commercial equipment on our streets. So I hope we pass this motion and send them a written message. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Councilor Novoselfsky that the mayor request National Grid to repair all concrete sidewalk squares on North Shore Road from Dana Street to Revere Beach Parkway. Concrete sidewalks were replaced with asphalt when new connections were made.
Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, you know, they make promises, promises, "Oh, we're gonna do it when we're through." Well, I want to make sure it's in writing. You know, they came up to Florence Ave and we build them out of Florence Ave because we redid the sidewalks. But we need them to remake sure they repair North Shore Road the way it was, not leave those black spots every 20 feet. I'm tired of it. So I hope this motion passes and they get the written message. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 24, motion presented by Councilor Novoselfsky that the mayor request National Grid to repave the intersection of Standish Road and Garfield Ave. The new roadway was destroyed when National Grid installed new pipe.
Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, when Danny Rizzo was the mayor, he took it upon himself to have Standish Road repaved. Not three weeks later, National Grid comes in, digs up a whole intersection at the corner of Garfield Ave and Standish Road. And we were promised, how long was that ago? Four years now? They have not replaced that intersection. They've promised me and promised me and promised me. I got a promise the other day again, but again, I still want a letter in writing to them from the mayor in response to the city council motion, supported by all of us, I hope, and send them another message and make them repave that intersection. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 25, motion presented by Councilors McKenna and Rizzo that the mayor seek funding for mold and air quality testing at the senior center on Winterbav Avenue. Recent rainstorms caused three inches of sewage water to fill the basement, requiring professional cleanup. It is a concern of the employees and seniors utilizing the senior center that they are being exposed to poor air quality due to the overall condition of the building.
I'll open it up to Council Vice President McKenna and then Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm gonna give it to Counselor Rizzo because I have a couple of motions and I'd like to speak on them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, this can be my motion that I will bring up and you're more than welcome to speak on it. But, you know, I will, you know, this will serve as a motion that I submitted so Counsel McKenna can speak on her others. But her and I had the opportunity to spend some time over there at the senior center, visiting with some of the residents, you know, people that visit the senior center, and then got into a conversation, you know, about the condition of the building. And it's a real difficult situation over there because of the sewer and because of the water backup that they get down there. It has not only caused, I feel like tonight we're talking about all this public health stuff, but they're, unfortunately, they're real issues that we have to deal with. We've got, you know, several hundred residents that go in and out of that building and, you know, throughout the course of a week. And when you have mold in the basement, that is just not healthy, particularly for older people. So we really need to, you know, take some of that free cash or stabilization money and look into correcting the problem, getting rid of that mold. And again, this, I don't believe is a problem that we're gonna be able to charge with our Inspection Services Department with. We'll have to put out an RFP or whatever we need to do to get somebody in there to check out the air quality, to check out where the leaks may be coming from. The backup of sewer, they absolutely need a check valve down there to prevent the backup of sewage into their building that they currently don't have. So it's gonna take, it's gonna take some work to fix the problem, to cure what's already there and to obviously do prevention. But, you know, I think that that has to happen sooner than later. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, we were there visiting the seniors and having lunch and this topic of conversation came up. And I know that when Counselor Haas was alive, he mentioned this in a motion, in a couple of motions. And I would like to really continue his motion and put this forward and see it, that it's done. So this is why we put this in. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morabito?
Thank you, Madam President. I believe assessing the senior center, City Hall, I believe these are great ideas. In fact, I offer an amendment to the motion to include all city buildings. Massachusetts has an indoor air quality program. It's known as IAQ, the IAQ program. So basically, this mass agency conducts assessments of indoor air quality in public buildings throughout Massachusetts. They also provide assistance on indoor environmental concerns and conduct sanitary investigations. So basically, what this program also does is they have two distinct activities. One, to check indoor air quality, to do an indoor air quality assessment, and a radon assessment. So I think that's something we should look into as well.
Counselors Rizzo or McKenna have any objections to the amendment? On the motion as amended? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor be requested to seek funding to perform an air quality test at City Hall. Council Order 17-429 was passed on December 11th, 2017, and this motion is the second request for such testing to be completed.
Yes, so we could prob, thank you, Madam President. And you didn't even acknowledge me, but anyways, I'm sorry. Maybe we could combine this in two, in one motion, both. But I did talk to Mayor Rego and he said that the air testing for City Hall will be in the next couple of months. So it is happening.
Thank you, Counselor. I was looking at you. You knew I was coming. I didn't say, you're always welcome. All right, on Vice President McKenna's motion, shall we combine that? I don't think we can combine it because we already voted on the other motion. You can withdraw it since we included it in your other motion. So that will be withdrawn.
Calendar item number 27, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the city council award a certificate of commendation to Barbara Pucci of Capic for the outstanding community service he does for the city of Revere. Most recently, he was able to secure funding for a homeowner in Beaumont whose basement was destroyed by this winter's severe storms.
Counsel Vice President McKenna?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'll save my comments from when he appears. Thank you.
Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thank you. I'd like to make my comments right now.
Sure.
And I have to add on to this. You know, he was great with Beaumont, he helped those people down there. But I was working with him down at the Caribeta property on Ocean Avenue and where the, all the elevators went out of commission.
I remember that.
All the elevators went out of commission one night. And I had a community meeting and we went from the community meeting over to 388. The elevator was out. There was a disabled person on the third floor. Couldn't get out of his building. Stuck on the third floor. I've had people stuck on the ninth floor, on 364, on the fifth floor, 370. You know, they're not good landlords. We are working to force them to do things. We have taken them to court. We have settlement agreements for them to try and obey and maintain their property. But they're very tough people to deal with. But Bob stepped up on this young gentleman on the third floor. He's in a wheelchair. And we had to call a fire department and an ambulance to carry this 350-pound gentleman down the steps and put him in a hotel. We called Bob, "I'll take care of the hotel." How long does he need it for? That's the type of guy Bob Pucci is. He's done a lot of great things. I know a lot of senior citizens that need assistance on their fuel. Bob has come through. And I don't mind saying that this right now because I know a lot of people are gonna say things that night. But he's a great guy. Takes care of his properties, takes care of his people, takes care of his employees and the people that use his services. He deserves this and I'm glad it was put in. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you, Madam President. I applaud Counselor McKenna for her motion and for recognizing the contributions that he is making to her ward, constituents of hers in Ward 1. But where she'll be presenting the citation whenever that is arranged, I won't be able to speak that night. So I'd like to just offer a couple of comments. You know, for me, I would be remiss if I didn't because Barbara Pucci just kind of flies under the radar. But he's the person you call for almost anything. I talked to somebody as recently as this afternoon who had an elderly grandmother in need of some clothing, went down to Capic and he was able to help her with that. He helps with fuel oil, he helps with homelessness, he helps with substance abuse, and on and on and on. And again, he flies completely under the radar. He seeks no accolades. In fact, he'll probably be beside himself to think we're gonna present him with a citation because he is not that type of person. He doesn't look for the recognition. He's a very spiritual man that just does it from the bottom of his heart because he wants to. He, you know, he has lived his entire life for the disenfranchised and the underserved, and that is who he is. And I am so happy that Counsel McKenna is putting this in because, in my opinion, it's long overdue. He has meant a lot to so many people and certainly to the city of Revere. So I look forward to the presentation that night. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotendo?
Thank you. Kind of hard to talk that, Danny. But Barbara Pucci's my friend and he's a servant of God, but more importantly, he serves us. And when he comes before us, I'll speak that night. This is a great motion.
Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that I didn't meet Bob when I was a counselor. He helped, when I was a teacher, I had homeless kids and they were living in cars and I would, I got a tip to call him. And that's how I met him. I met him 15 years ago and he's helped me ever since. So I just, that's what I just wanted to put in. And I'll keep my comments because I wrote something really nice for both of these people that I, that are getting commendations. So, thank you.
Thank you. Great motions. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 28, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the city council award a certificate of commendation to Joan Mosillo, legislative aide to Speaker DeLeo, for the assistance she provides day in and day out to residents of the city of Revere by helping them resolve quality of life issues and getting folks in contact with the appropriate state agencies or local resources.
Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, and I'll keep my comments brief and I'll address them when the people come up and get their commendation. But I have to say, she's another one who rides under the radar. She does a lot for everybody. You call her and if you give her, you say thank you, and she says, "Oh, no, it's Speaker DeLeo, it's Speaker DeLeo." She never wants credit. And so I just think that she deserves this commendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Madam President. A lot to say tonight. There aren't enough words to say about Joan. And I don't want to take anything away from the other folks in the office, you know, Barbara Bishop and Sophia. They're great, great people and they'll do anything for you. But I'll tell you, Joan and I was on the phone all weekend, this past weekend, Saturday and Sunday, talking about 364 Ocean Avenue with the elevators out. She is so concerned about the folks that are stuck up in the upper floors. And she helped us with the Department of Public Safety and the elevator folks, you know, to make sure it gets done. And she, and she's not afraid to say to them, "The speaker wants it done." And they jumped. They had the inspector down there, even when the court said, "We want it done." If the speaker said it gets done, it gets done. And maybe inspectors go down there and inspect it on a Friday afternoon at 3 o'clock. She's a great person, she's a great asset to his office, and she's a great asset in my district by helping all us, all our folks down there. So thank you, Counselor, for putting this in for her. She deserves it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rizzo?
Yeah, another excellent motion recognizes Joan Mosillo. But I think, I think this is a reflection on Speaker DeLeo, actually. You know, he hires and retains excellent people. No, Counselor Novoselfsky had mentioned Barbara Bishop and obviously my former assistant, Sophia Forgione. They do a tremendous job. So as a team, as a group, I think we're just so blessed as a community to be able to turn to them. And, you know, whenever we need something that we can't do on our own, that requires state assistance, it's great to have that resource from Speaker DeLeo in his office. So excellent motion. Thank you.
Well said, Counselors. I think this is a great motion and speaks very highly of our great representation that we have at the State House. On the motion, all in favor? Oh, Counselor Morabito?
Sorry, I thought we made eye contact.
Nope, missed it.
I'm sorry. It's a little too late because we just voted on it. But, you know, Counselor Rizzo mentioned that, you know, it is a testament to DeLeo, Speaker DeLeo and DeLeo. Did I not say his name right? DeLeo? DeLeo? And you're Italian, your dad speaks Italian. You're killing me. This, I think it was a ploy just to give him, get him name recognition. But anyways, maybe we can send a certificate to all of his staff and including him, how we appreciate their support and how they're very diligent in responding to our concerns as well.
Is that, I'm not sure what you're asking. You guys can amend, Counselor? No? We could just thank them that night and have a little moment? Maybe prepare some certificate for his staff and present it to him?
In addition to that motion, if we can make a motion on behalf of the entire city council to send, to appreciate, a certificate appreciation to DeLeo and his staff.
Speaker DeLeo?
DeLeo?
For him and his staff?
It's DeLeo.
We'll work with the clerk to finalize that wording.
And, and-
DeLeo, my katsuki five.
And Madam President, another Revere resident that is so valuable, that works out of his office, and I almost forgot, Maddie, who sings right at the, sits right at the front desk. She is there with a smile whenever you walk in. And she sets the tone for that whole office. So Maddie, you know, she's as deserving as anybody else up there to receive any type of accolades and our citation. Thank you very much.
So yes, for the whole Representative DeLeo's office.
Thank you, Counselor.
Madam President, can I just say? Hello? I just don't want to take away from Joan Mosillo's commendations. So, I mean, I think this should be separate. So-
Yeah, we don't want to do an everybody gets a trophy moment.
Right. I just, I don't want to take, I don't want to take it away from Joan.
That's still noted. So I think that we should present her a specific citation and then if it's just an idea, perhaps present the speaker a citation thanking him for his staff. Would that be appropriate? Okay, him and his staff? Okay, we'll do that. On Counselor Morabito's motion? All in favor?
Morabito?
All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 29, motion presented by Counselor Rotendo that the mayor appear before the city council to explain the scope of work regarding the audit, why it has not concluded, and was there any additional cost paid concluded, and was there any additional cost paid on top of the $72,000 approved by the city council for the audit?
Counsel Rotundo?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm glad that we were able to get Counselor Morabito to say the right name. Thank God his father called in to tell him how to say it. That said, frankly, I want to know why we have just a draft after, I believe, almost two years now, or at least, at least a year and a half. This is the longest audit that I've ever seen. In fact, this was one of the reasons why I wanted to go to the state auditor, because I feel like there's some shenanigans going on, to be quite honest with you. And I'm really, really surprised that this audit of this magnitude has taken well over a year and a half while the Powas audit that was done didn't show anything. So I'm, you know, which was set by Mr. Viskey, who was up here from the city auditor. So I want to know what's going on here. This seems a little suspicious to me. I think unless there's some grand conspiracy going on, I want to know why I can't have an audit that should have been done a year ago. The scope that was given was so small. Matter of fact, when they did the audit down at the DPW, which was four times the size, it took three months. What's going on? I said it then. It looked political. It looks political now. I want the, I can't say what I want to say. I'd like the audit. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, this is something that I've never spoke on before. I happened to be at the time that this funding was requested to perform this audit. There was allegations from the mayor himself saying that he was looking at 30B violations, which is very serious, very serious. Of course, in city form of government, there's a lot of safeguards. You've got your purchasing agent. You've got your purchasing agent. You've got your director of finance. You've got your auditor, you know. And so, you know, I knew going forward that it was $72,000 that was being spent unnecessarily, particularly where we have, where I had, and where tonight, for the first time that I can recall, it was mentioned that Powers &amp; Sullivan does our normal outside audit, which is required, although we've never seen a copy of that either. So, but it is a little troubling to hear the auditors stand here tonight and say, "Well, we have a draft." What kind of a draft are they talking about? It was, it has been two years since the council appropriated $72,000 for this audit. And if I have any inkling that there is anything that is inappropriate with this, then of course, we'll have to respond appropriately. But it's just, it is extremely troubling to not get any answers, and I haven't asked for it, but I know Counsel Rotundo has, and rightfully so. This city council spends $72,000 above and beyond what we normally spend on an outside audit. So I feel like, I feel like it's a fishing expedition, and I feel like that it could be, unfortunately, there could be some nefarious motivation involved in this. So, of course, I'll support the motion. I want to know, you know, we left this city in great shape. We left it with a tripling our stabilization fund. We had record free cash throughout four years. Our bond rating went up twice, and we received two budget awards. For someone to try to go in and muddy that is very, very troubling, Madam President. And I am, yeah, and so I am going to obviously support this motion. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 30, motion presented by Councilors Keefe and Patch that the mayor request the appropriate agencies responsible for the Route 1 embankments to coordinate a cleanup along Route 1 of Butting Revere. This has been requested previously with little action numerous times over the past year.
Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. I know that typically we use the Systems 311, and we offer requests, but as I mentioned, I was looking at it, and I've asked for pretty much all the streets that, in my ward that are but Route 1, and I know that Counsel Patch has a number of streets that are but Route 1, and some, I'm not sure of any other councils having any Route 1, anything touching Route 1, but, you know, along Fennel Street, Dale, Arnold, Vane, Amasa, McCleavy, et cetera. There's a lot, we talk about public nuisance. There's a lot of residents that have to look at this all day and the trash, that some of it is on the Revere property, and then, of course, I think a majority of it is on the state property or the DOT or whatever, whatever departments would handle that. But I think we just need a little bit more pressure, and I'm hoping to get a little bit more from our city to help apply this pressure if we have to get work crews out there. But this time of year, people don't want to look at that. In the middle of winter, when there's snow covering areas, I get it, you don't see the trash as much, but people want to be out in their backyards and enjoy themselves. They shouldn't have to look at shopping carts and dumped debris, you name it. So I'd like some help in that. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with Counselor Keefe. I had the good fortune of driving down Asti Road last week, and the prisoners were out there cleaning the Revere side of the fence, cutting the grass and picking up trash. But I agree with him. I go down Amasa a lot, and it was, it's terrible. It's really terrible. And the same, Asti's the same way. La Chia, they just, people just throw all the crap out of their car who stays by that fence. But it's also, I don't know how many times we put the motion in for Mastart to do the clean, the ramps in the other side of the fence, because it's terrible. I mean, it's, you just can't get anything done with them. So, but again, again, I applaud the city for, at least, they cleaned Asti Ave last week, and they did a good job. Thank you.
Any other counselors on this motion? Counselor Novoseltsky?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a recommendation to the counselors and the clerk that we also send a copy of this request to Representative Vincent. You know, she may have a little more clout with Mastart, and see if we can get the cleaning crew there. Excuse me?
Maybe we can send it to DeLeo as well.
DeLeo? It's not his district.
Counselor Keefe, I think it's DeLeo.
On the motion as amended? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 31, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor request inspectional services to work with the owners of McMackin Field to see that the blighted property is cleaned up. The fence and old signage is in disrepair, and the grass is overgrown.
Counsel Vice President McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be quick. Well, maybe. I, the field is in disarray. You go by there, it's a big, open field. What do you see? You see the signage is falling down, fence, pieces of fences are falling down, the grass is overgrown. This has been like this for six, six years? Nothing's been done. I want to call the owners up to the council, and I want to have a conversation with what they're going to do with the land. We need to do something with the land. It's a beautiful piece of land. It used to be called Little Fenway Park, all right? And now it's in disarray. And, you know, you come by, you go into Broadway, what do you see on the left-hand side is this field that's disgusting? So I would really like to start a conversation with the, with the owners and get something done. I don't care, you know, you know, if there's bad feelings against the city and the owners, I don't care, but I want to start a conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you. To be quite honest with you, it's been a blighted property. Under the law, we can take it by eminent domain and do something with the park. They have the money to clean it up. They haven't chose to. There's been numerous conversations over the past six years between, I believe, two administrations. So whatever the misgivings were back then, you know, so be it. But at this point, it's, it should be thought of and just add that to our list of parks, and maybe we can revitalize it. Thank you.
Any other counselors on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. There is no further business. At this time, I'll just make a couple of points so everyone knows. Revere High School graduates this Thursday, so that'll be Thursday night at the field, so you can account for a little bit extra traffic, so just keep that in your plans. And we want to wish the class of 2018 good luck in their endeavor, so that will be this Thursday night. I also want to note that there will be upcoming meetings of the Ways and Means Subcommittee. The meetings will be on the 12th, the 20th, and the 21st from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., if anyone wishes to watch. The next regular council meeting will be June 8th in this chamber, is at 6:00 p.m., followed by 18th, I'm sorry, I wrote down 18, I said 8, June 18th at 6:00 p.m., and followed by June 25th at 6:00 p.m.
Madam President?
Counselor?
To you, to Counselor Rizzo, about the meetings, I'm on the Ways and Means. If we don't get the budget, are you still going to have the meetings?
We'll have it Monday.
By me?
We'll have the budget Monday, so we'll have it for the meeting.
Oh, okay.
If there are any issues, we'll take it out.
I'm glad, I'm glad you find all things.
I look into it. Any other counselors have any other questions? I believe it was stated in the meeting earlier that we'd have it Monday, but. Any other counselors? All right, everybody, we will see you on the 18th. Have a good evening.